She's an architect.
Actually, I'm sorry.
On the staff of Department of Planning and Zoning.
Okay.
And there may be architectural questions that become relevant later. Okay? And so I asked her to be available.
Just because.
Because there may be architectural questions.
Appreciate that. I think you're live now, though, Bob.
All right. Ladies and gentlemen, I believe that we are now live and being recorded as well as broadcast. Welcome to this regularly scheduled meeting of the Annapolis Planning Commission. Is our very first action. Ms. Consoli, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Waldman.
I'm present.
Ms. Butler.
I am.
Mr. Cummings.
Present.
Mr. Riley. Is here.
He's just muted.
Uh, Mr. Pline.
Present.
Mr. Spackinutus.
Here.
And Mr. Bellamy.
Present.
Mr. Chairman, we have seven members present.
Stephen Riley's present. I'm sorry. I think I was muted, but I'm present.
Okay, we have a full complement for tonight's meeting. The agenda is very simple. We have a bit of administrative stuff to go through first before we turn to the main topic of conversation tonight. So let's do that administrative stuff first. First, the agenda. Anybody have any additions or changes to that agenda? Seeing or hearing done, I propose that all in favor of pursuing that agenda tonight, raise your hand and say aye.
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 Good. We have two sets of minutes, seven ten and seven seventeen. Let's look at seven ten first. Does anybody have any edits to those minutes?
No, I move, I move that we approve both of them. They're both pretty simple.
A second.
All right. In favor of approving the minutes, raise your hand and say aye.
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 All right, seven seventeen, same. You've had a chance to look at them. Any edits? Motion?
A motion to approve those.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 So we can now move to our main topic of conversation tonight, which is five eighteen Sixth Avenue in what's now, what's well-known as Eastport. It concerns a satisfying or not satisfying a requirement of the code in which new structures which are greater than three thousand two hundred and fifty square feet have to be reviewed by the Planning Commission. And that's what brings us here tonight. I want to make a couple of short comments before we begin. The first is that that three thousand two hundred and fifty or thirty-two fifty square feet is not, it does not limit structures. What it does is it requires this review that we're having tonight. So it is a bright line in the sense of the Planning Commission must review any structures greater than that. But it does not exclude them or prohibit them summarily. Basements which are underground by more than fifty percent are not included, and accessory dwelling structures are not included. Both of which I may say appear to be present in the plans that have been presented to us. The second thing is, is that what it is that we're reviewing is essentially whether the structure, proposed structure is fits into the neighborhood context by the size, the scale, the height, and so forth. And that it observe the sort of the context or the character of the neighborhood in which it's proposed. So in short, it's not solely that something is greater than thirty-two fifty. It's how does it fit? And that's what we're looking at. What brings us here is the proposed, the proposed structure is in fact greater than thirty-two fifty. And so what we're looking at is height, scale, exterior features, established setbacks, bulk, massing, and so forth. So we will proceed initially from with a report from the Staff Plan Reviewer, Mr. Meekins, a planner in the Office of Department of Planning and Zoning. And then we will turn to the applicant. The applicant and the community who many of you who have signified that you wish to testify or have submitted testimony. Both applicant and community have every right in the world to present their cases. And our duty is to listen and then ultimately make a decision. What we want to listen to are facts. Opinion is nice, but when we get to the point of commentary, I would like to remind everybody that it's facts that we're really looking for because that's what helps to make a decision and not simply sentiment. So the third thing I'd like to bring up is that it appears with the number of people who have signed up to testify and with the possible length of the applicant's presentation and questions and so forth that we may have for them, that this whole process may go beyond what I think should be a ten thirty P M deadline. In my experience, you can't think very well past ten thirty. And I think that this application deserves our best thoughts and deserves our patience and deserves the facts that everybody can bring to the table. So if we come close to or ten thirty, don't be surprised if I put an end to it simply for this evening. We will hold open the public hearing and we will simply reconvene on November sixth in person in city hall chambers and continue this until we're, have made a decision. So with those thoughts in mind and asking everybody's patience, I'm going to ask Mr. Mike Meekins from the Planning Department to begin in a moment. I have a question for Mr. Riley.
Yeah, I just, as it pertains to contributions or public comment, would it be reasonable to request a time limit of how much we would actually allow someone to put their, put their thoughts forward? I just think that there's, I know there's a lot of commentary on this and this is not going to be, I don't think this is going to be decided tonight personally. I just think that we need to be respectful of, and I just want to make sure that everybody else is respectful of everybody else's time. So if we could put a time limit on the amount of, you know, time that people kind of contribute to the conversation, that might allow us to hit our ten thirty deadline, if that's what you're looking for, Mr. Chairman?
I think that it's reasonable, but I also think that it needs to be flexible because frankly, some people really have a fair amount of technical information, which is, you know, could be quite useful. And I think that they should be accorded some more time. But then in general, I do think that somewhere around three to four minutes is should be sufficient, more than adequate for people to express sentiments and observations. But I will keep that in mind and now we'll try to be both flexible and firm. Is that sufficient?
I think so. I would just, everybody that's already on the call, I would just ask them to stick to the facts, be very succinct. We're all trying to get to the same outcome and I respect everybody that's on the call and I just, everybody's time is valuable and this is probably not going to be decided tonight, but would love to hear what everybody has to say. So please just like really keep your comments to the most salient points.
And not be repetitive of other people. Okay, well, when we get to that, we'll repeat that. But may we begin? Okay. Mr. Meekins?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you, Commissioners.
Do you have to raise your voice or raise your microphone?
Okay. Can you hear me better now?
Get better, get better.
Hold on a second then. How about now?
Is everybody okay? Okay.
All right, thank you. My name is Mike Meekin, Senior Planner with current, in current planning and the plan, in planning and zoning. I will try to be brief. I'm going to give you a summary of my staff report, which I'm sure you all have read. So this is five eighteen Sixth Street. The applicant is Gerald Hyman. S D P dash twenty twenty-five dash zero 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 forty-one. The subject property is located in the R two N C zoning district. New construction or enlargements are required to go through site design review. As you stated, Mr. Chair, structures in excess of thirty-two fifty square feet of floor area are required by code to have a public hearing and go before the Planning Commission for review and approval. And that's where we are. That's why we all are here tonight. So I'll give you a little background, which is again a summary of my staff report. And I fully think that the applicant will dive deeper in some of the timeline that I'm going to touch on. So the original application for the R N C application was in twenty nineteen, which was approved. The building permit, the building permit itself went through several revisions until late twenty twenty-three, when it was ultimately approved. In spring of twenty twenty-four, citizens raised questions of a different third floor profile while that building was being constructed and basically framed out. It had, has a roof on it. So in spring twenty twenty-four, that question came up to the department. Work was then stopped via stop work order issued by the department in twenty twenty-four. Following that stop work order, the building permit was appealed to the Building Board of Appeals. And the Building Board of Appeals declined to opine as they determined it was a building code, it was not, excuse me, it was not a building code, title seventeen, not an issue, but a title twenty-one issue, which is the zoning code. So in March of twenty twenty-five, the permit was then appealed to the Board of Appeals. And the Board of Appeals decided that planning and zoning had erred in approving the permit as it was over that number of three thousand two hundred and fifty square feet. They further said that if the department could not work out a resolution, a reduction in size with the owner, the applicant, and the applicant's team, it would need to be heard by the Planning Commission, not planning and zoning. So it being previously approved, this new site design plan was reviewed by the department with the understanding that the, that the plans that were submitted, the plans that you have before you are the same as the, the final plans that were approved in twenty twenty-three with the addition of added floor area tabulations. I was going to read the definition of floor area, but Chairman Waldman touched on that. And you know what? I'm just going to read it again. So per section twenty-one seventy-two one oh one in the city code, under terms and definitions, floor area means the sum of the gross horizontal areas of the stories of the building measured from the exterior faces of the exterior walls or from the center line of the walls of separate, separating two buildings. So in other words, it's basically the outer, I'll say vertical, it could be roofed on a, on a slant and the intersection of each floor's plane to the outer surface of the structure. So that is a brief timeline of why we are here. And that is why this application is before you to be heard, approved or denied by the Planning Commission.
Okay, questions?
I mean, I have the most fundamental question is we had rules. They submitted an application. It was approved. Did we not adhere to our own rules when we applied? When we, when we responded to the application? Mr. Meekins, I'll ask you that first.
Sure, I appreciate that. That's a, it's muddy waters. It's a tough question to answer. There's a lot of history in this project, obviously. A lot of which I am learning from studying and reading and going through many, many documents. But to answer, to try to give you some insight from my research during, from the beginning of the process, the application, which was a paper application. The paper application noted the square footage. I don't have that number memorized or right in front of me, but it was in the realm of three thousand square feet of floor area. From what I've looked at, the plans that we have records of, nowhere on those plans can I find a tabulation for the floor area for each iteration except for the one we have now, or the one that you have now in front of you and in front of the commission.
Which poses five more questions for me, but I'm really, I don't want to lead. There's so much to say. There was, there was an application. It was approved. Correct me if I'm wrong, and I don't want to get ahead of myself, but did we, do we believe that we approved something that should not have been approved? If the plans are the same that are sitting in front of me today, that were submitted originally? Bob, I'm asking you that question.
Well, I mean, I think the Meekins needs to answer it more clearly specifically, but the plans that were submitted initially were for approximately, on the paper handwritten form that submitted is, I believe it said something below thirty-two fifty. Now, there was, there was an original application in twenty nineteen. I don't know if the square footage was included upon that original plan. And then there were a series of some, somewhere between six and eight revisions according to what I've learned from Mr. Meekins. And I, and some of them are missing, but the square footage is apparently not included on those revised plans in which the, the structure grew. And then on the final revised plan that we have in front of us, square footage is included. So the answer is both yes and no.
Okay, can I make, make a comment here? And I think I know where Mr. Jakubiec is going here, but what I was going to say here is that, you know, all of this history is, you know, it's sort of interesting, but it's not really relevant because what, what we have, because it, you know, went through the Board of Appeals and they ruled that it's over thirty-two fifty, so it's got to come to us. So the way I've looked at this is like, let's, let's, I know it's hard to do, but let's put aside for a second the fact that there's a building that exists there now. Let, let's, I, I think what our task here is we've been given a site plan, a site design, and all of that history is not really relevant because we, we, we have what we have and we're asked to apply the code to, in the process to, to what we have and not all of the stuff that happened in the past. It's interesting and, you know, I'm, I'm sure we could talk for another week about what, what happened there. But it's just, you know, I, I just don't want us to get, get wrapped up in that because I just don't really think it's relevant. And that we have to go from what we, what we're presented here, because that was what the Board of Appeals said. They said, if you can't come to an agreement and it's over thirty-two fifty, you got to go to the Planning Commission. So that's where we are. So I, I just, I want to try to short circuit this to like, let's not rehash the history because it, it's not really relevant. That's anyway, anybody, any, any of the legal minds in the room want to correct me on that.
But what is relevant, I would just ask while you're on that topic?
Well, I mean, the, the site plan that we have and because it's over thirty-two fifty square feet, it comes to us and we apply the criteria in the code. List of testimony from the public as to whether they think it does or doesn't meet this sort of, you know, rather somewhat subjective criteria in, in the R two N C about, you know, architectural and rhythm and, you know, all that stuff. It's, it's, it's a little, you know, there's, there's a amount of subjectivity there. So we have to just do this as, as if it were something that was just brought to us.
Ms. Butler?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that while Alex is right that the Board of Appeals apparently said you could have to go to the Planning Commission. They actually, when they remanded it, said, or you can work with planning and zoning directly to reduce the size and scale. And I guess from my understanding, and Mr. Jakubiec, you can confirm this, they never got back to you. So then you put forward this package for the Planning Commission because they weren't willing to or didn't want to respond and work with planning and zoning directly. Do I have that right?
You're muted. Mr. Chris, you're muted.
Okay, I'm back. Thank you. So there are a couple of questions I'd like to answer. First, Commissioner Pline's point is spot on. We're literally in front of the Planning Commission under new code that was adopted just Monday night. That sort of renders a lot of the history, history. There is a something, it is worth noting though, that the plans did get approved. Permits were issued lawfully and the applicant worked with the Department of Planning and zoning to make revisions to the first plan that was approved back in twenty-one, resulting in a plan that was done in twenty twenty-three, and that's the plan that's before you tonight. To Commissioner Butler's point, the remand from the Board of Appeals was to, for the director to work with the applicant to seek a resizing of the structure or a in a, the, the work within the structure to bring it into compliance with the technical standards that existed before Monday night. And that they are, those standards are interplay between zoning and building code. And that's why things are so complicated. We would not find ourselves in this situation if, if not for very convoluted code language that required multiple reviewers to apply different standards to arrive at a result. So what you have here is an interplay of very complex standards, people acting in good faith. And the end result is a, a building that is over thirty-two fifty and should have been sent to the Planning Commission. Should have been sent to the Planning Commission back in twenty twenty-one. And again, in twenty twenty-three. But for an error in the understanding how things were measured, that was made by our predecessors. Mike and myself weren't, weren't even here back then. So that's where things are. It's, we have attempted over the past many months since essentially March, when the Board of Appeals rendered its decision to work with the applicant to resize that structure, to bring it into conformance with the standards that existed until Monday night. And we were unsuccessful and I'll allow the, the applicant to address why they felt that the changes to bring the building into a, into conformance with thirty-two fifty were, were considered to be too onerous and too disruptive to the existing building. But in any case, the other option is to bring it to the Planning Commission and it's either, either or. And so that's why we're, we're here because ultimately I determined that we were not making headway and the public interest demanded that we move this forward to a public hearing.
Mr. Jakubiec.
Thank you.
You, you referred to Monday night. What, did I miss something? What happened Monday night?
Okay, the very good question. Mon- Monday night, the City Council adopted a new definition of floor area. Which means essentially that any horizontal area within a building is counted as floor area. And it's thus therefore counted toward the thirty-two fifty standard. And that's why this particular building now looks like it's, well, it's now counted to be, what is it, forty-four hundred square feet or forty-one hundred square feet? Don't have the number right in front of me. It's because we are counting every square inch of floor area. Up until Monday night, you only counted floor area that was deemed habitable. So builders could build houses that were bigger than thirty-two fifty and exclude the space that the building official made that determined was not habitable, didn't meet certain ceiling heights and other aspects. So that's why, when the more I talk about this, more you can see the complexity that our staff had to deal with, with the applicant's architect to arrive at the approved plans along the way. We simplified things upon the City Council's adoption of a new definition of floor area.
And what's, what's the practical effect of that decision on the matter before us tonight?
It, well, the practical effect is you're, you're making a judgment about the square footage that exceeds thirty-two fifty. You're, you're approving a structure that exceeds thirty-two fifty. But you would have been here anyway. You just, it would have been more complicated. We'd have to explain the building code provisions and title seventeen and what's habitable and what's not. Now we just look at the building and for now on, any applicant that comes in, we won't make judgments about what's habitable or not. If it's a horizontal surface within a building, it'll be counted. If it's an attic and it has a horizontal surface area, no matter if it's unhabitable or not, unless it's crawl space that, you know, can't literally be used, it will be counted as floor area. Moving forward, it's more likely that the Planning Commission will receive more applications to review in the R two N C district. Because in the past, we've reviewed projects and had them capped at thirty-two fifty, knowing that the buildings were bigger than thirty-two fifty in a technical sense.
Okay, well, thanks for that, that background.
I, I think you, I think you just touched on something super important that's going to affect many, many decisions to come. This is a public hearing and this is, it's relevant to the, to the the case that's in front of us today. But Chris, in like sixty seconds or less, could you distill down to everybody that's listening, what was changed this week, which clearly is a I think a significant change to the way that everything works from contracting and architecture and planning decisions and, and so contracting and architecture and planning decisions and, and so forth. Could you help us kind of understand that in a more succinct manner, not just relevant to the case that's in front of us, or how you just kind of, you just kind of walked around it with Everett there? But I'm just curious, your sixty second or less, like, this is what has changed?
What has changed is that the planning and zoning site planner viewer will know what the size of a building is at the time that a site plan is approved. The determination will not be made by the building code official reviewing construction diagrams and making determinations about what's habitable or not. Because up until Monday night, the department has approved, per code, buildings that exceed thirty two fifty. And the, the exceedance was generally considered to be non-habitable. Now, any building will come to the Planning Commission that exceeds thirty two fifty, whether it's, there's no distinction between what's habitable or not. In, in simple terms, every horizontal surface in the building, including in the attic, or the, you know, in this case, the, the third, finished third floor attic space, all that space is considered floor area. Up until Monday night, judgments were made about what was habitable or not. So discounts were made, even though the space itself exists, the staff would reply, apply the code and say, well, actually, only a small part of this third floor attic space is actually habitable. Therefore, it's not counted towards a thirty two fifty rule. Again, moving forward, any space. And up until Monday night, if a sloped roof in an attic defined the edge of the, acted like a wall, it could have been considered uninhabitable, or not even, because, not even spaced, because the floor area definition says horizontal area contained within four walls. Didn't say contained within four walls or sloped roofs, when sloped roofs form four, four walls. So in, in short, the standards are succinct, direct and clear, and, and should lead to better decision-making and, and the avoidance of these types of difficulties that are created for the, the neighbors, the applicants and all involved.
All right. Ooh, I'm sorry. I want to push back a little. I'm sorry. I don't want to digress too much here on what we're, we have in front of us. But that sounds like a, a more rigid application of policy and the rules and gives you and your team or a, a lot less discretion over certain spaces, because I know places that have four foot ceilings over top of a, of a large attic that has a lot of horizontal square footage. And are you saying that that's horizontal square footage is being considered the same as a nine foot ceiling on the floor below? And therefore, it just kind of changes the way that we calculate all of the above?
Commissioner, basically, yes. We're gonna be much more rigid about applying the standard because this standard is ultimately about massing and scale of buildings. And, and, and we want buildings that fit compatibly within the R two N C district. So we will err on the side of a rigid interpretation of the standards and where there is a clear space that is, you know, if it's, we have to make some interpretation. It's totally unfurnished, unfurnished, inaccessible, attic, all, all there is is insulation. Clearly, the, the definition in the thirty two fifty rule allows us to eliminate that because it refers to uninhabitable attic. So, but if it's accessible, if it's reasonable, that could be converted to space, if it could be used for storage, yes, we're gonna count it. And if it exceeds thirty two fifty, we will submit the application to the Planning Commission. That's what the current law says.
Anyway, I think if I can maybe make it really succinct here.
Yeah, Alex, I was gonna ask your kind of interpretation.
It's really, it's, it's very objective. So I, the, the word strict's not really the right word. It's very objective versus subjective. You just put your measuring device on the plans and you can, you can measure that. It's really easy to do. I think the practical effect is that it, it actually low, sort of lowers the square footage number, if you will, by some, some amount. That's a little hard to quantify because you are, you are including some of the space that, you know, used to be sort of subjective. So, you know, the, the practical effect is that it does sort of lower the bar. And as Mr. Jakubiec said, we're, we're likely to get more applications to us.
All right. I think that we're, we're, we're beginning, we're, we're beginning to discuss the policy effects of this new definition. The point, though, as, that was said by Mr. Jakubiec, is that that definition will, it, it, it leads to an appreciation and understanding and an ability to visualize the bulk, the mass, the scale of the building, no matter how its inside space is used. And that's what we're looking at tonight, is how does this building's size fit within, does it or does it not fit within the goals of R two N C? But the, but the measurement definition is meant not to change how the inside space is used, but it's meant to be able to determine what the outside, the shape, the form of the building will be. Okay? So if we can move on from that, I do have a question that maybe Mr. Meekins can answer, which is, under the old definition of measurement, what did, what came up as the square footage? That's one question, okay? And this, there's a, there's an allied question, which is, when did the square, any square footage measurement begin to appear in any plans? And thirdly, I want to remind everybody, even if I can get answers to these questions, okay? That's not what we're looking at. What we're looking at tonight is, we have a proposed plan in front of us on paper. Can we read from that whether it complies with the requirements of R two N C? No blame game. No looking at the past. Who's at fault? We probably find that everybody's at fault. Okay? But can you give us?
I, I understand, I understand that, but are we, you know, are we putting new rules in on this, you know, situation that had already been approved? I understand, you don't want to look at the past and you want to look at this, but are we changing things just to, you know, suit needs right now?
The only change, the only change is how, how square footage is measured. Okay?
Right, no, I understand that. That's why I'm very interested in your first question, which is, what are the, what is the square footage under the prior measurements?
Yeah, so, under the prior measurements, I don't have the exact number, unfortunately, in front of me, but it was, it was within the realm of less than a hundred square feet over that thirty two fifty. And that's, and that's again, you know, that's again, looking at this from the perspective of both the building code, well, mainly the building code, the architectural plan reviewers, and the determination of, you know, is a pitched roof, at what height does that become habitable space? And, and so on, like, is a closet habitable space, a stairway, and so on and so forth?
Right. So what, what is it now after, with the new measurements? Do you know that?
Uh, yeah. We are at forty four twenty two.
So it basically went from thirty two hundred to forty four twenty two with the new measurements?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, let me add just the context there. When I went to the Board of Appeals on this question, I believe that the, the building itself, the first and second floor were combined, was about twenty eight feet over thirty two fifty already. And then the, the upstairs, I believe that that time was about a hundred and two feet over because it was deemed to be at seven foot ceilings. So the, the, the architectural plan reviewer considered that to be habitable. But two years prior to that, in twenty, in, for the twenty twenty one plan, the determination was made that it wasn't, not habitable, and it wasn't counted. But that's still, that square footage still existed. So I just want to make the point that, and in fact, the, the protestants or the appellants to, to that application had different measurements. Their measurements were, and they, in fact, the architect for the project had multiple levels of measurements, depending on what typical, what code standard was applied in Title seventeen or the International Building Code. So it was very complicated. But in essence, the, you've got it right. The, under the new measurements, while the building hasn't changed, the measurement has changed. The, 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 the building number is different, but the, the space inside is the same.
So, so, and the answer to my question, which was, what was the square footage under the old definition? That there were several different numbers that were produced. Is that correct? Is that correct? Mr. Jakubiec, is that correct?
You're muted.
Yes, that's correct.
So there were several different numbers. Okay, and there were several different revisions. So it's very hard to get a grasp on what the old measurements were at any one point in time. Correct?
Correct.
Okay. Does that, Tom, does that answer your question in some way?
I don't, it gives me an idea, you know, but if we're just looking at it, you know, thirty two hundred, give or take a little bit here, thirty two hundred square feet with a new measurement to forty four hundred square feet. I mean, that's an extreme amount.
To be clear, it was, it was greater than thirty two fifty. Okay?
Yeah.
We were rounding to thirty two hundred, but it was already, it was above thirty two fifty. Yeah, so.
So it should have come to the Planning Commission four years ago.
That's right. And that's what the Board of Appeal said.
Okay. In any case, it is before the Planning Commission, and we are going to continue. I hope that we've informed ourselves somewhat as to this past. And I remind you, and we will go over this again, as to what, what it is that we're looking at. Okay? We're looking at such things as height, scale, established historic front setbacks, bulk, massing, similar to structures or buildings on the blockface, and so forth. Okay? So we're basically looking at size and how it fits into the neighborhood. Mr. Riley?
I just wanna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna do respect to everybody else. I'm gonna go directly to Alex and ask this question because I feel like I vibe with him when it comes to these things, and we don't always agree. It seems to me that there were rules in place four years ago when this application was put forth, and a decision was made that was not the right one. It should have come to the Planning Commission at the time. It did not. Since then, even since Monday night, new rules have been introduced that make it even more restrictive, and we would probably file a, follow a different guideline as the Planning Commission. But there's this one applicant that's falling into this gray area. And I want to be, not only do I want to do what's in the best interest of the city today, but I also want to look out for the best interest of the applicant who did something four years ago that was approved. And I'm just trying to find the, the facts so that I can be as informed as I possibly can be to file some kind of judgment on this for myself, so that at least I feel like I've done all of my due diligence. And Alex, I'm just kind of like leaning to you because you said a few things, and you and I have already hit on a few of these things, and I just want to hear your response to that.
Yeah, well, I mean, so, under, under the, the new objective way of calculating it, it's above thirty two fifty, so it comes to us. But as we've already heard, and as I think was mentioned in the staff report and, and by Mr. Jakubiec, even, even before that change, it was above thirty two fifty anyway. So it should have come to the Planning Commission. It didn't. And, you know, again, that's, that's, that's history, and, you know, it's not really our lane to, to, you know, I mean, we all care about the, the process that sort of smells a little funny. But, you know, it is what it is. But that's not really relevant to what we, our, our task tonight. Our task tonight is, we're, it's, 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 it's as if this plan were just filed and brought to us. All the, all the old history, that, that just doesn't really matter. I mean, it matters, but it doesn't matter for the task at hand.
Are we ready to move forward?
Please.
All right. Mr. Craig Martin, AIA, do you think you could cut off your video? I don't know where you are or what you're doing, but it's pretty distracting. Thank you. No, you're back on.
Mr. Martin, you're muted, so we didn't hear what you said.
He's attempting to turn it off.
Mr. Martin, can you turn your video off? Yeah. Or, or we can drop him as a panelist. All right. And we're ready to move on. I suppose there are other questions, you know, that will come up perhaps about what was available when, but what we have today is a set of plans, and I'm gonna ask the applicant to begin to present its case. Mr. Fulton, I presume you're speaking for your client?
That is correct, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. And before I begin, by all means, if any of the commissioners have any questions, I encourage you to interrupt me in fire way because, as you can all tell, this has been a complicated project. There are a handful of questions. And personally, and with all due respect, I think the history is entirely relevant. And I am going to touch on a few items with respect to the story and the history of this project, but I've got a few things to address first. As Mr. Meekins alluded to, this is a narrow request for approval under what is known as this thirty two fifty rule. The property is owned by Mr. Gerald Hyman. He is the applicant. It's zoned R two N C, and it's located at five eighteen Sixth Street in Eastport. As I mentioned, I, I am gonna dive a little into the story and the history of how and why we wound up here before the Planning Commission in fall of twenty twenty five, seeing as though, you know, this project began almost six years ago. And I will touch on that in just a, a second. I think it's critically important to explain why this application ought to be approved. But what is perhaps more important than the history of this project is the thirty two fifty rule itself. And, Mr. Chairman, I don't mean to repeat what you opened with, but I think it deserves repeating, and so I will be brief. Candidly, because I note that a number of public written comments submitted for this project indicate what in my mind is a total misunderstanding of what the thirty two fifty rule is and does. A number of folks appear to think that the code states that no home in the R two N C can be over thirty two fifty square feet, while others appear to think this planning commission proceeding is some sort of appeal. And neither are true, and I appreciate the Commission recognizing that, and I'm gonna explain very briefly. The thirty two fifty rule is applicable in the R two N C. There's no doubt about that. It's set forth in twenty one forty zero six zero C two B, and it, it states, new structures, enlargements to a structure and structure alterations which result in the structure being in excess of three thousand two hundred fifty square feet of floor area are subject to public hearing, review and approval by the Planning Commission. In other words, the rule does not prohibit a house in the R two N C from being over thirty two fifty square feet. It doesn't punish an applicant for proposing a house over the thirty two fifty square feet line. It doesn't necessitate or require any sort of variance, and there's no applicable hardship standards. This is not an appeal. We're not asking for anything that the code doesn't allow. And with all due respect to Commissioner Butler, the applicant, to, to that point, has every right to be before you and seek a, a project over thirty two fifty. They were asked and instructed on remand from the board to work with the Director of Planning and Zoning, just to see if they could get under thirty two fifty. That would avoid us having to be here. But there's nothing in the code that even insinuates that by virtue of being here, we should be punished. It, the, the code.
No, I, Trip, I want to just say for the record, Trip, I gotta stop you right there. That's not what I said. When, when Alex was saying what the choice is, what the remand said, I was just clarifying that they had two choices. They could take the path of Planning Commission or work for the Planning and Zoning. I'm not saying that they shouldn't be here.
I, I, I appreciate that. If I misinterpreted, that's my fault. I'll add one thing.
No problem. I forgive you. And you know what? I just realized, were you, you were working in the City Office of Law. I knew I recognized you, but you were working for the City Office of Law when these applications first came in. when these applications first came in. And I just recognized your face because I've seen your name, but it's not Trip normally in the paper. But then when I saw the letterhead Alan Hyatt come through with your name on it, I was like, you know, this guy, we worked on Providence together. Anyway, good to see you.
You as well. Believe it or not, this application came before I got to the city. Just goes to show how long it's been in the works. And and Ms. Butler, the point I was really trying to make was that after the remand from the board and up until this evening, we did work with the Director of Planning and Zoning, and I appreciate uh Director Jakubiec acknowledging that. Unfortunately, for one reason or other, we my client rather uh determined that he wanted to go to the planning commission because that was the choice that the the code allows for him. But just to to wrap that up, we we met multiple times with the Department of Planning and Zoning and everyone gave a good faith effort to put their heads together to see if there was some way to keep this within the department's uh review group, but it just didn't happen, and that's why we're here, and we think the code allows us to do that. In any event, as I said, this isn't an appeal. We're not asking for something that the code does not not allow. And just to just to be direct, if the code did prohibit dwellings over thirty two fifty square feet in the R two N C, I think it would simply say so. Ideally, it would say something like no dwellings over thirty two fifty square feet. And if an applicant wished to surpass that floor area, they would need a variance, and perhaps they would need to appear before a Board of Appeals. But again, as written, the thirty two fifty rule is very simple, and it doesn't say that. In practice, it really does one very simple and narrow thing. It shifts the reviewing and approving authority on a very limited element of a site design approval to the planning commission. Plans that remain under thirty two fifty are reviewed entirely by the department. However, if a structure is proposed to be over thirty two fifty, this planning commission must review and approve that. That's really all the thirty two fifty rule does. I will note, just for the record, my take on or rather my explanation as to what the thirty two fifty rule did before Monday evening's legislation, because I think it might be just another way of looking at it. Um currently, and as with before the the new legislation, the thirty two fifty rule does not include square footage and basements that are fifty percent or more underground. It also does not include detached accessory structures. And as we've mentioned up until just two or three days ago, it did not include uninhabitable attic space. Um so essentially, when a when a project reaches the department and it's bordering this thirty two fifty rule, the the department for many years was looking at, okay, we've got this set of plans. We can see the floor area calculated for each level. And then they went up to the attic floor and determined whether or not certain areas were deemed habitable or uninhabitable. Um with that calculation and that judgment in mind, they often reached a a determination that the house was under thirty two fifty. As Mr. Pline and Mr. Jakubiec have alluded to, what that caused is a number of homes in the R two N C that are as matter of fact, over thirty two fifty. But because the carve outs for uninhabitable areas existed, the calculations were massaged to a number under thirty two fifty. Well, this legislation removes that ability, and as Mr. Jakubiec alludes to, it just wipes out that entire carve out. So now every square inch between the exterior walls get counted. And it makes the process a little easier. But a again, as the commissioners have aptly acknowledged, this will probably in all likelihood lead to more applications for thirty two fifty rule approval coming before this planning commission. Um so again, I I anticipate public testimony this evening that states no dwelling in the R two N C may be over thirty two fifty. That's the law, but it's patently not. It's just not what the thirty two fifty rule says. Any applicant in the R two N C can come to the planning commission and seek approval for a a dwelling over thirty two fifty. They just have to actually do it. That's all. And that's really where the history and the story of this project becomes in my mind incredibly uh meaningful. I I'll try to be brief, and I appreciate Mr. Meekins at least acknowledging that this project's uh been going on for quite a while, but there are some details that while you know, I appreciate we're here and a and a narrow with a narrow inquiry to just decide if these site plans meet the thirty two fifty rule, but I I do think history provides some context, if for no other reason than to explain that a lot of people have seen these plans. A lot of directors and planners and boards of appeals and building boards of appeals and multiple directors of planning and zoning have reviewed these plans and have led us here to this evening.
But Mr. Fulton, you will agree nonetheless that finally, through whatever process, the application is before us and what we have before us are a set of plans as supplied.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you. So then so then the the relevancy of all of the history is irrelevant. It's because, wait a minute. It's because we're not here to assign blame. We're not here to assign shame. We're here to decide according to very simple factors inside the code that applied to R two N C buildings that are over thirty two fifty square feet. Do you accept the fact that the building as presented is over thirty two fifty square feet?
One hundred percent, Mr. Waldman.
Thank you. Then what we're here for is to look at mass and scale and bulk and exterior, okay? We're not here to assign or feel sorry for anyone, any one of the parties. We don't have the resources. We don't have the time, and we're not. We don't have that kind of a case before us.
I appreciate that, Mr. Waldman. I I hope you didn't interpret any of my comments to me and that I was going to sit here and start poking the finger at everyone and say, this is your fault or this is your fault. Uh I think Mr. Jakubiec hit it spot on. We're dealing with a complicated code that's been interpreted a number of ways. The reason I bring it up is because it very literally ref- reflected and um affected the design process from the applicant's point of view. There is a a history of design here that isn't intended to change, to comply with a changing code. And I understand you you're not interested in that history and for that very purpose, I will skip over it. But I do think it's relevant. And if for any other reason than to explain, and I'll get to it one time with the the architect, to explain the difference in the third floor. Because as you'll see, there were attempts to to comply, to protect, potentially avoid the planning commission, and it is relevant to see what efforts and what changes were made to comply with the very criteria that you were admitting that you're going to review. But I'll save that until I'm speaking with my architect, and I appreciate your thoughts. That said, I I do have to note one thing because it's relevant to this matter, and it's again, not pointing any fingers. We have been to the Board of Appeals, and the Board of Appeals is one of two other parties that have already approved these plans. And and again, I'm not pointing fingers, Miss Mr. Waldman, but I bring this up to say and to address, uh I think it was Mr. Saffi Sfakianutis's comments. This is the same structure that was originally um submitted for approval back in twenty twenty one.
Wait a minute. Wait a minute. I I understand that the original plan, which I is not before me, but it may not have included several factors that are now included because there were eight revisions. Okay?
You're right. Let me let me can I can I explain? It it's not as simple as I, you know, my my first sentence led it to believe that. I can qualify what I just said. Just give me one moment. The 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 point I'm trying to make is the footprint is exactly the same.
Okay, well, then say that because that's not what that's not what we're presented with. I mean, we are presented with the same footprint, but we're not presented with the same plan that was applied for in twenty twenty one or in twenty twenty three.
Am I permitted to explain how? Because I do think it's relevant, Mr. Mr. Waldman.
Well.
It's pertinent to how we got here. This this project has been approved once. It's gone to the Board of Appeals. The the commission and the public deserve to know exactly what Mr. Hyman's gone through to get to this point.
We but my contention is that it's not the same project. When you say this project has been approved, it's gone through so many transformations and revisions.
Now, it it really hasn't.
The only way that we can properly decide is to look at what we have.
I I appreciate that, and all I'm trying to say is a an abbreviated context provides relevant information to the determination you need to make at hand. All I'm saying is this. There was a house that was applied for submitted for site designer approval in twenty twenty one. Permits were issued. It was approved. In twenty twenty three, construction began and minor modify, you know, minor modifications were sought and also approved and construction began. The minor modifications, the only changes to the original approval are two things. One is a slight change to the pitch of the roof. It became a little less steep on the uh third floor attic roof and two outdoor balconies. That those are the only structural changes from the original approved set of plans. All other changes are simply changes in the method in which the square footage of this entire single family dwelling were calculated. We're not. I'm not going to rehash that because you guys already did that. I just the the commission deserves to know that these plans are for all intents and purposes, were approved by the City of Annapolis Department of Planning and Zoning. They were appealed to the Board of Appeals, and the only thing that the Board of Appeals remanded was the narrow thirty two fifty square foot inquiry, and that's what's before us and why we are moving on to the architects that have been assisting Mr. Hyman in this entire place. I'd like to call uh Craig Martin. Craig is the lead architect on this project. He's a principal of Spire Architecture here in Annapolis. And I know he was on with me because we were speaking with him just a moment ago. Craig, are you with me?
I I think I am. Um I'm sorry for the blur of the camera. I was trying to find a place where I had uh proper wifi. Can everybody hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you fine, Craig.
Excellent. Uh thank you, Trip. Yeah, I I I know that we are in a uh I guess a a desire for quick statements in time. So I think if I can sum up, um I understand the board wants to see this uh essentially as a new building. This is a new application. Uh and I think quickly we can say if if the things that are in question is whether it is commensurate with the requirements for the R two N C. There was a lot of attention put towards making this building comply with the R two N C, I guess vernacular for lack of a better term. Um there was or the existing structure had jalouse say windows and enclosed porch. Very consistently, I served on the uh the ECA board that uh evaluated these things for what is Eastport and what isn't Eastport. Uh removing jalouse say windows and opening a porch is something that we have said a thousand times, you know, no enclosed front porches.
Hey, Craig, Craig, I I'm gonna I'm gonna stop you real quick. We're gonna get to all this in just a moment. I just want everyone to understand who you are before we continue with this.
Oh, sure. Sorry. Uh I'm.
Okay, one second. Can you, just for the record, give your name and address to the planning commission?
Sure, Craig Martin. I live at two seventy Hillsmere Drive in Annapolis uh in Hillsborough.
And can you tell the board what you do as your profession, Craig?
I'm an architect and one of the partners at Spire Architecture in Annapolis.
Can you quickly uh tell the board your qualifications to be an architect, your education, any licensing?
Sure, I have an undergraduate degree in construction engineering from Virginia Tech. I have a graduate degree in a master's degree from Catholic University in architecture. Been practicing in the city for twelve-ish years. Um I'm an AIA member, NCAR member. The qualifications of a licensed architect in the state.
And are you licensed in the state of Maryland?
Yes.
Okay, are you and you acknowledge you've done architectural work in the city of Annapolis, is that right?
That's correct.
Are you familiar with the site design review and site design planning processes as well as the zoning code, specifically the R two N C?
Yes.
Okay, and do you have experience designing single family dwellings in the city, including the R two N C zone?
Yes, done multiple in the R two N C.
And I think you had mentioned a moment ago that you'd recently or previously had involvement with the Eastport Civic Association. Can you remind me what that was?
Yes, so I served on that board uh uh up until this project became, I guess contentious and was asked to, I guess, I guess, uh remand myself until this got resolved, and that's in two years that I've not been on the board.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure if it's this board's practice to accept expert witnesses, but if it is, I would ask that Mr. Martin.
No, let's move on. Let's move on.
Fair enough.
We've we've been through this like a hundred times with Mr. Hyatt. Don't don't just don't go there.
Fair enough.
I'm I'm with Alex on that one. I think we have enough expertise on the panel. I we appreciate Mr. Spire and the fact that he absolutely knows this project inside out and backwards.
Yes, and none none of his qualifications are are in question.
Thank you. I appreciate it, Mr. Pline. And and I understand the board's practice. I just candidly wasn't sure myself. Um Craig, you were diving into the architecture and essentially what items you considered with respect to the aesthetic for this project. Don't let me stop you. Can you remind me what you were where you were headed there?
Sure. I mean, I think the question a as I see the board's perspective for this project, does this house as designed, as presented currently, whether it's over thirty two fifty, uh when it was calculated, whatever the history was, does this house over thirty two fifty fit the vernacular or the the style of of Eastport currently? And I think unequivocally, we can say from the beginning, we designed this with the intention to have it fit into the neighborhood. Um and I was saying a little bit about how that was done in concert with the planning and zoning board uh uh office, um making the facade uh have multiple step backs, have multiple, I guess, uh sides. Um the the massing to be smaller than, you know, one big building, uh wraparound porches, the details that were commensurate with other buildings in the area. Um the front building, you you may notice in the plans, it's sort of two attached buildings. The front building was an existing structure that was essentially recreated at Tom Smith's direction. Um having it that mass and that size and that shape, the the front um I I guess ridge and porches needed to remain as they were originally, wh- which was done. The front setback was maintained as is required by code. The heights were maintained as required by code. Um the addition, which is very typical, and you will see in other structures on this street, was done behind the main ridge, behind the average ridge setback, behind the average ridge height. Um our measurements for the ridge, this complies with the added ten percent uh allowance. Um I I think there's an argument or there was a lot of question whether whether or not it does comply with height requirements. Um even in the opposition, the the statements were whether it's uh twenty nine feet or thirty feet is the required height. Um that seems, again, de minimis. Um there and it 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 can be discussed, but it it's a um the way that we see the heights complies with the the height requirements. You guys have the calculations there uh in terms of details, uh massing, um other things along the street. Uh it 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 fits with the size and the shape of the neighborhood. It fits with the details that were required. It was designed in concert with the planning and zoning office to make it fit size, scale, massing. It's a two and a half story building. Um I I think that, as you were saying, that the difference, what will now happen for sizes, um will attics even be possible? I mean, a a floor plate of a thousand square feet will essentially be what you're allowed to have if you have an attic. So uh I guess to end my uh statement, if you have any other questions, glad to answer them. Um the if this is approved, what will happen if it is approved? I think there's also questions if it's not approved, what does that do as as was brought up by some of the other uh council members? What does this going forward have an effect? So with that, I will take any other questions you have, Trip, or anything else that I can add for for our perspective.
Craig, just for the uh commissions wherewithal, I did want to run through the floor plates. That way the the commission can see the second, sorry, the first, second and attic floor plate and the basement if they're interested, but as you know, the basement's not included in the uh thirty two fifty rule. Is our IT administrator here? I'm trying to share my screen. Is it working? Julian?
Yeah, you're good.
Yep, we can see it.
Craig, can you see these uh plans?
Yes.
And are these the plans you submitted for this project?
Yes.
Okay, I'm starting on this uh drawing A one point one. Can you identify the two floors that are shown on this drawing?
Yes, the basement, uh which as you said, is not in count included, and the first floor, which has the note for the square footage next to it.
And with respect to the basement, is it true that the entire basement for this dwelling is at least fifty percent underground?
Correct.
It's entirely underground, is that correct?
Yes, except for the windows giving light. That's correct.
Real quickly, Craig, we're looking at the first floor plan down here on the bottom. It's got the first floor updated measurements for the floor area. Can you just quickly identify for us what that measurement is and just a quick description of the flow of this first floor and why it was designed this way?
Sure. So as you can see, this is a a ground floor primary suite, which is very customary for uh you know, living in place or aging in place, living. Um a full bathroom for that potential suite. Uh and then the rest of this floor is living space for the family, uh living room, uh it's dining area and kitchen. Um you'll know that there's an elevator for a potential elderly person to be able to reach the basement floor, this floor and the upper floor. I guess the second floor.
And this uh floor area calculation for the first floor is sixteen hundred forty eight square feet. Is that right?
Yes, and that that is what the to the exterior of the walls as is required by the updated code.
Moving on to this page A one point two, can you identify the floor plan we're looking at here?
Exactly. This is the second floor of that building, correct?
And real quick, it's the same floor area, first and second floor under this definition of floor area. They are identical for this plan. Is that right?
Correct. They are aligned. The exterior walls are aligned.
And real quickly, can you again provide just a a brief outline of the design of this second floor for us?
Sure, as you can see, this was designed as a a four bedroom area, uh the front primary suite and then three additional bedrooms. Um through subsequent designs, you can see that there was one bedroom that was turned into a a closet space. I guess one of the bedrooms was not needed. Uh but again, a a four bedroom, second story, again, a very typical uh size and shape that we have designed numerous times in this district.
That's great. I'm gonna move on to the uh attic floor now as well. Okay, can you tell me the difference between the top drawing and the bottom drawing for me real quick?
Sure, the top is, you know, the roof drawing showing that, I guess, that the 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 roof shapes, and then you can see the the balcony on the rear. And then the lower drawing is the section through that third story or the upper story, the 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 half story above.
Okay, and now this third floor attic drawing on the bottom here, I I can see all house measurement totals here in the left hand corner. Do you know how large the floor plate is on this third floor? Do you know how large the floor plate is on this third floor attic?
So, yeah, so the total at the bottom, I guess it shows the full area is inclusive in the same, the new method of determining square footage. So includes the eaves that are inaccessible, that have no floor, that have insulation. It includes the HVAC area. It includes the hallway, the bathroom, and it includes the unfinished attic space. Anything that's inside of a wall as per the new code passed on Monday.
And I'm gonna move to one additional sheet here. Commissioners, you guys don't have this sheet. I would offer it to be part of the record if you'd accept it. All this is, is a sheet that kind of describes what Craig is getting at here. When you're calculating the floor area of this third floor, especially under the new legislation that just passed earlier in the week, you quite literally have to account for floor area that is under sloped roofs and floor area that is behind interior drywall. What this drawing does is it outlines essentially in this box that I'm hovering over, a few components of this third floor floor area that are included in this measurement that totals one thousand one hundred and twenty-six square feet. So Craig, I'm hovering over this crosshatched area on the left here. Can you describe for the commissioners exactly what this area entails?
So that was designed as an area that is behind drywall, it's eaves, insulation for the sloping roof above. Essentially inaccessible, except for an access hatch to, you know, make sure that the mouse traps are set properly. It's an inaccessible area.
And just to the right of it is a gray shaded area. Can you describe for the commissioners what this area was designed to be?
Sure. Again, a sloped roof, so that's where the HVAC unit, the actual unit that is doing the air handling is located.
In the middle is a narrow darker gray portion, looks like bath, hallway and stairs. These are all included in the floor area, is that right?
That's correct. And that, in the old measurement, that would be the dark areas, the area that would be counted, and everything else would have been seen as uninhabitable or not counting. But it is included in the totals, in the new section, the new way of calculating as well.
And just for my own peace of mind, are, is the stairwell included for the floor area measurements in all three floors, first, second and third?
Yes. In these calculations, yes.
Got it. And finally, to the right, we've got this larger, in this rendition, it's labeled as the unfinished attic. Together, this unfinished attic, this hallway area and these two other spaces to the left, they total one thousand one hundred and twenty-six square feet, is that right?
Correct.
Commissioners, under the new legislation, it doesn't matter what any of these spaces are used for. As Mr., as Director Jakubiak acknowledged, under the new legislation, you gotta count every square inch. So, Mr. Chairman, the point I was trying to make earlier was just that we, up until Monday of this week, or up until a point recently, were strongly considering finding as many areas on this third floor as we could realistically render uninhabitable so that it could not qualify towards the thirty-two fifty calculation. That would reduce the measurement that we are seeking relief from beyond the thirty-two fifty rule when we would come this evening to the planning commission. Due to that legislation though, however, this all has to be included. So we're back to these plans that have been submitted to the planning commission, which for one reason or another renders all of this space that we were just looking to, looking at under a magnifying glass really, habitable and has been included for the total calculations. Craig, there are a few R two N C design criteria that are applicable under the R two N C's base regulations. Are these structural alterations at five eighteen in your opinion compatible with the historic character and design of the area? Was maintaining existing streetscape a priority? And if so, how did you accomplish that?
Indeed, it was. As I was saying earlier, that, that front area, sort of this building that you can see to the left, the lane you can see to left, that's the side that faces towards the street. That was the existing structure. So the porch was opened that, the, yes, you can see there. Trip, do you have any of the elevations, kind of three D models that are part of that?
I don't have the, I don't have the three D models. I've got the, just the north, west and east.
Maybe that front elevation is helpful. Yeah. So, so the upper right drawing here, that porch being opened, kind of the railing being shown, the roofs being put as sort of a belt course around the middle, and you'll notice the, sort of the, the structure to the left, being the one that was original. The area to the right, as you can see, as it goes back towards the back of the lot, that's where it gets taller, much like many of the other structures, the one next door to it, two or three across the street, very similar structure of, you know, creating the new living space behind that does not, you know, absorb or take away from the front existing space. And making sure that there were belt courses to show a human scale, have windows that have the details customary in Eastport. You know, this horizontal lap siding, which was much more of an Eastport style of siding than stone or any, you know, steep shaped roofs or flat roofs. There was a gabled roof applied all the way through. You can see that these masses are broken down and see where there is a, an articulation in that facade showing some breaks in that big side. So it doesn't look like one big wall. Again, this was very much done in concert with Tom Smith and the planning office at that time. How do we make this building that, again, at that time was ruled to comply, feel like it's smaller pieces instead of one big building? So again, very intentional to keep with the style and character of an Eastport building.
I think you're referring to the stepping. I'm not sure this sheet shows it as well, Craig. I'm gonna go up to one of the first or second floor. I think what you're relating to is these stepping right here, and I think it's on both sides. Basically, you're saying the massing was all pushed to the back, consistent with a lot of Eastport homes, but even then, it was still stepped in as it made its way back, is that right?
Correct. Yeah. And that's actually a sort of a code directive as part of the Eastport overlay district, making sure that these masses do not have a a large run-on sentence feel to the side, but instead feel like small, even potential additions that had happened at different times, which was all part of the attention from the original design.
Did the city have any requirements with respect to the front facade?
Sure. It had us to keep that front area. And you'll see there are a number of comments, letters that were made through the different iterations through E C A and through responses from the planning office. There are a lot of different designs as we started this process. Some had turned gables, some had gables that went side to side. Ultimately, in responding to two or three different sets of directions from the E C A and from the city, it was decided to have these gables that kept with much more of a, you know, a typical Eastport style, to have the sloped part facing front to back and the gables being on either end. So you can see how the addition mimics the same gable shape as the front. You can see how the porch roof stays at that first level. This being what we would call in the industry, a two and a half story building, meaning there's living space or there's space that is carved out underneath of the roofs above. But again, not being considered habitable under the old rules. But it allows there to be that space to get out to that rear balcony, even though it doesn't, it has that feeling and sense of the two-story cornice on this building.
Craig, were there any requirements for the front setback as well? Not just the facade, but the actual distance. Did the city require any front setback requirements?
Yes, in the R two N C, keeping the existing setback of a structure being rebuilt to keep the street face, not setting it back or putting parking in front of that, or moving the front facade back, and the front facade was kept on the same footprint as the original building.
Did you calculate the height for this proposed dwelling?
Yes.
I'm gonna go down to the height elevations. What did you calculate to be the average dwelling ridge height along this blockface?
So in the method that's typical, if you are counting the blockface heights, measuring siding courses, structural courses, there is essentially an amount of estimation granted that happens. These are rounded to an even foot. We did not have the, you know, twenty-seven point three feet or twenty-six point nine feet. These are rounded to the even foot. This was totaled to be an average of twenty-seven feet, as you can see at the bottom, where it says, I guess, the sum at the bottom of that column.
And with a ten percent tolerance, I believe we get to a permitted height of thirty feet, is that correct?
That's right. With the two point seven, ten percent rounding up by city code, that gives the available thirty.
And this tolerance was recommended for approval by the city's Department of Planning and Zoning, is that right?
Correct.
Mr. Plin, I see your hand up.
Can I ask two quick questions here? On, on the, on determining the ridge heights of surrounding properties, is that, so that, that was done not by measurement, it was an estimation?
That's correct. So by counting siding courses, estimating there's a foot of structure between each floor. This is private property, so we can't go on physically measure. These are, this is the typical process that is done for estimating blockfaces. As you all probably know, it's required to estimate all measurements of all houses on a blockface, whether it's three houses or twenty-five houses. Figure out what the average ridge height is and then.
The code doesn't say anything about the methodology there, because there are, there are instruments that can make, you know, that are not particularly expensive, that could actually make those measurements without intruding on somebody's property. But the code doesn't require that?
It does not require that. It does not require survey. And I think, again, I'll interpret that. It would be an exorbitant expense to have a survey, you know, done for each renovation that's done in Eastport. So I'm not sure what the city is thinking in, you know, not either requiring or not requiring. I can't speak to that, but it's not required in the code of a survey.
Okay. And the other, the other question I had is, is maybe it's from Mr. Fulton, is, you know, we saw the letter requesting the ten percent variance on height. So that's been asked for? Has it been approved by the department?
And the department took the position that by virtue of this thirty-two fifty inquiry, necessarily by code coming before the planning commission, I believe their staff report said, we would approve it if it were our call. They kind of are deferring to the planning commission, but essentially saying, you know, if this were a plan under thirty-two fifty, we would grant the tolerance. But by virtue of us being here, it's, candidly, it's unclear whether or not this is a call for them or the planning commission, but know that they are recommending approval.
Right. So, so the only reason I mentioned that is, is that the criteria for that, and let me see if I have this in the right place here, if I have it. But it basically says they can do this administrative adjustment of ten percent. You know, if, if, if it's like the difference between having, you know, making something really habitable and not have, I, I'm sorry, I don't have it. I had it pulled up, but I, I don't have it here. But it basically, you know, says they can make that adjustment if, if it like is really gonna make a difference to the livability of the house. And the question that I would have about that is, this is a pretty big house, so like, I don't think anybody's gonna argue that point. It's, this is a bungalow. And the ten percent, like, is it gonna make or break this house? So I, I make that comment is a concern that I have.
I appreciate, Mr. Plin, I'm looking up the code itself right now, because I'd like to see it. I'm not sure it required.
It's like, I think it's in the table notes.
Yeah, where is it? For what it's worth, Mr. Plin, the, noted. I appreciate the sentiment. We calculated it with the tolerance and the city thought it was appropriate.
Oh, so I'm sorry. So I have it here. Just, so I'll actually state it says. Oh crap, where did it go? Shoot, I lost it again. Anyway, I don't want to take up any more time, but we can, we can, somebody can find that and read it, maybe at a later point, but.
And what, what was the date of that letter, Alex? Was that something that just came in like last week?
Couple days, a couple days ago. So that, that was why my question.
Ten percent, yeah. How could it come after the fact they've already built it and now you're asking for the top?
We have to put it, we have to put aside the fact that it's already built.
Yeah, I was just wondering, but there's no, yeah.
So, so the question is, and this is maybe a question of Mr. Jakubiak, but who's, are they punting that decision to us? That, I'll be really blunt about that. Is, I'd like to know a sort of a definitive answer to that question, if that's a decision that we're gonna get to make.
Mr. Plin, if you'd like my thoughts, honestly, because I think you're asking what we are intending with this, and our answer is no. I think that's a determination that remains with the Department of Planning and Zoning. I think we're here on it.
Mr. Fulton, he asked for Mr. Jakubiak's thoughts. I'm sorry. I understand. I understand. You have a lot to say and you say it well.
And, you know, and Mr. Jakubiak can come in at a later time and answer that question. I don't want to disrupt the rest of your, your, your spiel here, Trip. So I'm sure he's heard, he's heard the question. We'll just table that for now, but we will need to know the answer to that eventually. So anyway, go on. Thanks for answering my questions.
Now, I'll give you, I'll give you a chance to respond again.
No, I have no response. I just figured he'd want to know our thought on it before he was asking for Director Jakubiak's as well. I, we filed the request to the Department of Planning and Zoning because it's our position that it's the Department of Planning and Zoning's call to make. I think we're here on a rather limited inquiry. Are, is the planning commission going to approve a house over thirty-two fifty? And there are criteria to look at while making that determination, but this height issue is not necessarily within that purview. I think the code's pretty clear. It's a determination by the director of planning and zoning.
Wait a minute. It's not a part?
It's something to consider.
Not a part of R two N C?
It is part of R two N C.
Okay. Well then, why is it not a part of our purview? Height is scale of buildings.
The text of the code says the average height of all structures on the blockface measured to the highest point. It refers to, except that the director of planning and zoning may allow a tolerance. That's why I think the director of planning and zoning is the appropriate one to make that call.
It's not what it says in R two and C.
No, that's what it says.
I'm reading table note nine.
Yeah, it's nine I B.
Where's the table?
It's, 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 it's the R two N C bulk regulations table.
Okay.
Footnote, because the footnotes are important, nine I B. Says the average height of all structures on the blockface measured to the highest point of the roof, except that the director of planning and zoning may allow a tolerance of no more than ten percent of the average height upon finding that this tolerance is necessary to provide for adequate living space in that the tolerance will not promote incompatible design and diminishes the adequate supply of light to adjacent properties.
Okay. So you can clearly give direction to the director on this one. Okay.
But I just, I raised that because I, I heard something that, you know, they, they wanted us to decide that, and I think that's, whether we just give them some advice on that is, you know.
I'm not quite sure on that one. I would ask Ms. Woods to maybe take a look at that more carefully while we continue.
Mr. Waldman, on this point, there are a variety of code provisions within the design criteria of the R two N C itself, separate and apart from the thirty-two fifty rule, which expressly state that a lot of things, a lot of decisions will remain with the director of planning and zoning. I mean, subsection C two C identifies seven criteria in the R two N C. It's outside the thirty-two fifty rule, and it, just like this height provision expressly states that those criteria are reviewed and approved by the director of planning and zoning. I know we can spend hours talking about who determines what, and it will have to be looked at at some point, but it's worth noting that, you know, no design plan shall be approved by the Department of Planning and Zoning until findings consistent with the following guidelines have been made. It expressly identifies the Department of Planning and Zoning as the party that makes these findings, separate and apart from a thirty-two fifty rule inquiry, which is why I'm calling this request quite narrow.
Except that the thirty-two fifty inquiry includes height.
Sure. You're right.
Okay.
Craig, we have spoken at length about bulk massing and scale. In your opinion, is the bulk massing and scale similar to structures on the blockface on this Sixth Street block in Eastport?
Yes, and particularly because the, I guess, the desired context texture in Eastport was used to make the details, the design, the structure, the roofing, the columns, window openings. And particularly, I mean, I guess technically the code reads the blockface, but even if you go up and down this street, you can see directly across the street, there is a house that has a, you know, one story porch that has columns. There are plenty of other examples along both sides of the street using the similar, I guess, scale, massing, one and a half story, two and a half story buildings. I mean, it is a solid, large house. There's no question that it incorporates all that, that space, but it is not larger, it's definitely not the largest one on the block, even by S stat status. So I mean, what, what, what makes Eastport vernacular, we designed very intentionally and we feel maintain that it maintains the Eastport style.
Is it safe to say that, you know, elements such as like rearward massing and these stepped side elevations were intentionally done to be consistent in massing and scale with the other homes up? side elevations were intentionally done to be consistent in massing and scale with the other homes up and down this block? Regardless of the fact and accepting the fact that this is over three thousand two hundred and fifty square feet?
Yes, for sure. And again, uh, be, having been part of the ECA for a number of years, uh, it's a very typical practice. If there's anything that is larger or going to be not similar to that front space, it's done behind the ridge, uh, further away from the street face. Um, so again, consistent with other judgments that we have rendered as part of the ECA. And at the end of the day, as being on the ECA, we knew that our suggestions were uh, ways to encourage design changes or to um, keep the same style of Eastport. But at the end of the day, that Annapolis and the, the City of the Planning and Zoning Office were the people that made the determinations, that the, the suggestions came from ECA, but that Annapolis was the one that determined whether or not it fit the criteria that they found to be required to, to meet that standard.
Craig, I've just got one last question for you. You know, there's a section in our code that we have touched on, the commissioners have, I have as well, I believe the, the city has too. It's twenty one sixty two. Uh, it, it addresses certain components and elements of a structure with respect to adjacent developments. It touches on relationship of the structure to adjacent development, height, width and facade, proportion mass, relationship to street, roof forms, composition, rhythm, proportion of openings, facade, materials and color. I know we're, we're in a unique state here because part of the building's already been built. Are there any of these components that you haven't addressed yet that you feel uh, still are needed to be explained in order to describe to the commission how this fits in with the R two N C?
And no, I mean, hopefully I, I've demonstrated that we've designed intentionally and feel that these uh, elements for sure are in the Eastport style. And, and again, um, there have been a number of uh, letters that have been submitted about what people feel about this. Um, I, I have not yet seen as part of the submitted uh, letters, the one from Tom Smith from June first. And, and I'll, I'll quote, because at the end of the day, they were the ones that determined whether or not our impression met the criteria. I'm quoting from his uh, criteria, maintaining the existing streetscape was a priority during the review process. The department finds this approach fitting, giving the existing massing contextual designs along Sixth Street. As with many Eastport properties, the associated improvements increase massing to the rear, behind the existing contributing structure. The architectural massing and roof forms maintain historic street elevation while also breaking and stepping the proposed forms on their side rear elevations. I mean, when you ask the principal, did I do well on my test? And the principal gives you this uh, answer. I think it's clear that we designed with intention and the people that make the decisions on whether we did or not approved our design.
And what year was, what, in what year was that letter issued?
June first, two thousand twenty one.
Thank you.
And Craig, I guess one last follow-up question. The only changes to the dwelling that has been constructed since that letter was issued are the slight um, lessening of the slope on the third floor attic roof and two outdoor balconies. Is that right?
That's correct. And again, we're approved by the Office of Law. Um, again, uh, people higher than our pay grade saying these are things that are approved and can be, uh, I guess added in meetings that we had no part of.
So I have a question about that. Can, can you uh, because this is part of the, this is part of the uh, you know, what, what the code says you're looking around for is, can you identify any other property in Eastport that has a second floor balcony on the front facade? I, I mean, there's none that.
Dare I say, um, these are questions that we have all the time. Can you find one example to excuse, I, I can find some, I could give you a, a list. But I don't think that's the question. Those were not things that we had the intention to do. You would have to talk to the applicant and the Office of Law because we did not put those on our design. It was designed by the applicant and the Office of Law approved it.
Well, I mean, the, the criteria, I'm just looking at the criteria and it, it's asking, you know, is this, does this rhyme with other things in the neighborhood? And so that's what I'm, I'm asking.
Top of my head, Terry Avril's house on Chesapeake Avenue has a second floor balcony. There's a second floor balcony on the house across the street from Ruth Chris. So if that's a criteria, yes.
These were on the front, the front facade?
Yes, but I don't think that me giving you those examples makes you say, okay, they're acceptable.
Well, I, I li- like to see that there's precedent there, because that's essentially what the code's talking about. Okay, thanks.
Sure.
I have a, I have a question or a comment that I would just like to get a little more clear on. Um, I'm kind of straddling some of these, some of it's my inexperience, uh, some of it's just like um, seemingly rational approach to, but I'm, I'm just curious if um, I, I, what, one person we haven't heard from tonight is a person that I respect his opinion a lot, which is Quentin. But um, people are allowed to go over this thirty two fifty square foot. There, there are, there is precedent. Um, this particular application is unique in a certain way, but it's also gonna set precedent for something that we're gonna do moving forward. And then Monday seemed to have changed some of those things again. So I feel like we're in this bog right now. We're in a, a, a challenging like situation for every one of us, myself, starting with me to understand what am I actually looking at right now? Because it's not just, due respect to Craig and Alex and Bob and Trip and, and, and the applicant, but it's like, we're trying to fix what was messed up a few years ago. We're trying to comply with what we've already decided is the right thing to do and what just happened Monday. Like, we're, we're being asked as the, we, I, I feel like we're the scapegoat. Like, I feel like we need to have a little more like understanding from people who are far more intelligent than I am to distill things down to a fifth grade level, which is why I asked Alex originally. Quentin is my, my other guy that I ask, like, what the F is going on? So how can we make a decision tonight that's actually gonna be um, substantial enough to, to move this thing forward? Because Trip, I hear you, I hear your legal approach to it. I, I, I appreciate how you're presenting your arguments. I understand what happened before, but there's law today. And Alex is just saying like, this is what's up today. We don't need to consider what happened yesterday. We need to consider what is our purview today and what we're allowed to decide on today. I'm trying to be a reasonable individual, but one person I haven't heard from is a person on our commission that I respect a lot. His name's Quentin, and I'm gonna call him out right now to give.
David, I understand your impatience and unless Quentin wants to talk, he can talk.
Oh, he does. I already, I texted him separately and said, dude, we need your thoughts. And he, he has thoughts. He's just not been putting them forward.
Well, we have not heard from the community also.
Okay, well, I'm gonna ask Quentin first if he has something to say. I would love to hear it because I respect his thoughts and opinions on this. And I think he's a balanced, he has a really balanced opinion on.
Yeah, so thank you very much. Um, sorry, my computer froze. So while I was trying to check to see kind of what Alex was getting to in terms of questions of compatibility, right? So i- in terms of here, you know, people are allowed to go over thirty two fifty in square foot size. Uh, that was mentioned. They just have to come in front of us, right? So I kind of look at this as, do we decide if it's compatible with the neighborhood structures, right? And um, and so it, I kind of have the flip side of what Alex asked, which is instead of, can you point something out like the front porch where you see that in the neighborhood? I kind of want to know the opposite of that, uh, from the people who will be uh, presenting or, or giving testimony is show me, tell me what about this structure that you don't see in the neighborhood? Because right now I'm not, I'm not quite seeing that, right? So show me what you, what, what about this structure that you don't see in the neighborhood? Because that wa- it gets to the compatibility issue.
Okay, all right. That's a cue to me to keep things moving along. Mr. Fulton?
I'm gonna defer to Craig on this one. I don't see a whole lot myself. And um, I'd be interested to hear if Craig's got any identifying features that set this apart, aside from the size um, from other homes in the R two N C. I mean, the one thing that stuck, uh, stuck, stuck out to me during Craig's testimony was that this is a it's a house designed for a, a generational family. Um, families are bigger. They, they, they want to stay in the same house for generation after generation. I think that largely, or at least in part, contributes to the size of certain bedrooms, which implicitly lead to a larger floor area. But I'll leave the, the rest to Craig.
I, I mean, again, I think that Quentin's question, thank you for that question or that, that perspective. I, I think we've told you a thousand things that do belong and trying to find something that doesn't belong. Um, I, I, I I, I can't think of anything. I mean, I, I, I think it was designed very intentionally to have elements that are Eastport vernacular. So I, i- if anything, I, I would say that other houses on the street that are, some that are bigger than thirty two fifty don't have Eastport vernacular. They do have different materials or flat roofs or, or size. So what is it supposed to fit in with? I think it's this mystical idea that we have, it's kind of a Chesapeake coastal theme, right? Horizontal siding, wooden details, um, vertical columns, wrapping porches, uh, me- metal roofs where appropriate. Um, I think these are six over two windows. I mean, all of those things, if you had an Eastport playbook, are from the Eastport playbook. So I, I appreciate Quentin's question, what doesn't fit?
Okay. All right. Anything else?
Yeah, I just have a quick question. So I was just curious about the Office of Law and how they were involved with determining whether balconies fit in Eastport.
Is that question to me?
Yes. From the Office of Law too.
I, I was not part of any of those discussions. It may be worthwhile to, to talk to Trip or to the applicant, Gerald Hyman. I, I do not know what happened.
Ms. Butler, uh, yeah, my answer's gonna be brief. I'm not sure they play a huge role in approving things. Um, I too wasn't there. Um, I think decisions under, with respect to planning and zoning are left to planning and zoning. And in certain instances, the planning commission. Um, so I, I don't have a great answer for you, but you, you know, if I, if I am gonna uh, adopt Mr. Plin and Chairman Waldman's approach, I don't know that they're all that relevant to the plans that are before you today. They were, the Office of Law's involvement, um, as I understand it, was back in twenty twenty one. It might have even been prior or shortly after the original approval.
Well, it's just that you're talking about the balconies and issues about, you know, the way the facade looks. And I'm just trying to figure out, there is a letter written, it was part of our packet, if I can find it, that talks about what was gonna be acceptable and not acceptable. And, and I agree with you, it seems like that's a planning and zoning issue. So just uh, kind of at a loss to figure out how all that stuff was decided. And, and uh, yeah, can't find it. It was right in here. Are you familiar with the letter that I'm talking about?
But I um, like Craig, I wasn't there. I, I don't know why they were getting involved. Uh, I'll just repeat. Planning and zoning determinations are made by the Director and the Department of Planning and Zoning. In certain circumstances, we come to the Planning Commission.
And so when they're not, how do you figure out why? Cause that's an interesting concept to me. Cause how did the, um, yeah, I think it's a letter dated. Getting there, I'm getting there. Sorry.
Twenty twenty three.
All right. Cause it doesn't talk about other, there it is, October twenty fifth, twenty twenty one.
No.
And they talk about the garage, they're granting a garage and more um, leeway on the driveway and a bunch of other things. And then it just, it just talks about a lot of the, actually some of the issues that the architect was just talking about. And I'm just wondering where it came from and how it got involved in this whole review process. No one, so it sounds like you're saying you don't know.
I personally have no idea. Yeah, I'm with you, Ms. Butler. I think decisions like the ones they were at the very least acknowledging in that letter belonged wholly with the Department of Planning and Zoning. Um, but again, the, the plans were modified, albeit very briefly. And um, the, the plans before you uh, are the plans before you.
Well, at that time, it says, in addition, no more chan- changes to the plans will be forthcoming from you. This is um, the attorney, Mike Lyles, saying to the um, applicant. And we know for sure that after October twenty fifth, twenty twenty one, cha- changes to the plan did take place. So there's a lot of history here that I know we, we said we don't want to go into, but we keep sort of touching back on it. So I thought I'd call everyone's attention to the October twenty fifth, twenty twenty one letter. Um, that, that basically says, we're gonna give you all this additional stuff, but you've gotta stop asking for more changes.
Were there more changes?
Yeah, I guess it was several iterations since twenty twenty one, since this letter was written.
Any other questions of the applicant at this point? And, and Mr. Fulton, do you have anybody else you want to present?
I don't, Mr. Waldman. Um, well, actually, no, I, I take that back. The applicant is here. Mr. Hyman, are you with us? If he's not, that's okay.
You need anything else for me? Should I go on mute?
You can go on mute for now, Craig, but, but hang tight. Don't leave quite yet.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Hyman is here.
Is he present is the question.
Well, is he present as a panelist?
Yeah, no, he's on the panel. I don't think he's uh, but Mr. Hyman, this is your chance to uh, speak with, yeah, we can hear you, Gerald. This is your chance to speak with the um, planning commission, if you so choose. If not, we can uh, carry on to whatever's next with respect to the chair.
Yes, okay. Okay, good e- good evening all. Um, I, I first want to elaborate on the uh, the front of the house. Everything was specifically stated and said that I have to put the house in the same position as the existing house. Uh, it had to look the same, even with the front uh, roof. Um, I even have to put the existing corbels, the corbels that was on the existing house the same as it is on the, the newly built house, as well as across the front of the existing house that has been added. So we, we tried, we worked very hard to keep that house to look exactly the front of it at least, exactly like the existing. And so that's elaborating with that. Also, um, the house, I believe, on my side of the street, at the stop sign to the right, I believe that's six hundred Sixth Street. They have a front porch balcony on the second level. Okay, there's plenty of houses over there, even one or two, three, that's on uh, Chester Avenue on the right-hand side. I believe that's in front of uh, Mr. Marcellus Butler's. Butler, um, his property. Um, it's plenty of houses over Eastport. But what, what, what went on, I purchased that home in December two thousand fifteen. I immediately started work with the city in January two thousand sixteen. I have date documents of, of drawings, okay? Throughout all these years, no matter what my wife and I tried to do, tried to design, the ECA just kicked back on everything, everything. And so it came to a point as, I, I believe it was May or June of twenty one.
Hey Gerald, Gerald, we're not, we're not gonna get into the, we're not gonna get into the history again, Gerald. We're not, the, the commission doesn't have time for history.
I was getting into, I was trying to, I understand, I was trying to get into how um, um, Mike Lyles and everybody else came involved. Because no matter what I try to do, I try to seek help. You know, no matter what I do, it, they, they have given too much leeway, too much power to ECA to, I can't build anything. I, I, I can't. I was, it was eating our, our funds up. So many years it went by. So in, in twenty one, I added everything up and it wasn't even all the receipts, ninety five percent of the receipts, almost a half a million I had spent. So I, I, we were seeking help, we didn't know who to turn to. I mean, um, this has been a nightmare, man. So from two thousand, from January two thousand sixteen till now, it's going on ten years.
Gerald, let me cut, let me cut you off. If, if we don't have anything else to say about just the style and design of the house, then let's just keep it to that. If, if not, Mr. Chairman, we can uh, move on to wherever you wanted to head.
We can move on.
All right. Are there any other questions that the commissioners have of anybody who has spoken of so far?
I don't have, I don't have any questions of anyone who has spoken thus far, but, but this, Mr. Chair, it would be helpful to me at least, if you were to restate the, the three things that you laid out for us early on in this conversation. Um, so that we could make sure we could keep our focus on track.
Yes.
And I also like to say, I, I'm on travel, as I mentioned in the beginning of the meeting, and I might have to leave in another ten, fifteen minutes. Uh, but I wanted to uh, bring, bring us back to that point.
Two things then. What I'm gonna do is I'm gonna ask uh, Mr. Fulton to stop sharing his screen so that I can share mine. And I will put up um, the portion of the law uh, about the factors that we need to look at. And if you need to leave in ten or fifteen minutes, what I would suggest is And if you need to leave in ten or fifteen minutes, what I would suggest is that at that time, probably, uh, we can take a break. And if you wish to continue as a commissioner on this case, you will have the opportunity, you know, to look at it over the next two, the remainder of the meeting over the next two weeks. And that will suffice to keep you um as part of the quorum.
I would like to do that. I'd like to say.
Good. Let me, let me, let me shh there. Uh, let me share this. Screen two, share. Okay, and uh, let's see if I can make it bigger. Oh, god damn, I can't make it bigger. Can you guys see this?
Yes, we can see it.
Yeah, okay.
Also, for those others who cannot, you can always hold down control and zoom and scroll in with your wheel, and it will increase your own screen size.
Okay, I know. I wish I could make it bigger. There we go. Okay. Let's start. R two N C, Single Family Residence Neighborhood Conservation District. The purpose, preserve patterns of design and development, diversity of styles. Diversity of land uses, okay? Protection of the architectural massing composition and styles as well as neighborhood scale. That, those are my highlights. Neighborhood scale and character, the compatibility of new construction with existing scale and character. Encouragement of existing types of land uses. Well, in this case, we're talking about residential, so we're not talking about a mixture of. Anything else, okay? Preservation of streetscapes. The uses are set forth in the table of uses. It's a residential neighborhood. Development standards. Bulk Regulations Table. This is what Mr. Pline was referring to earlier. And maybe if we don't finish things tonight, between now and the next meeting, we'll have a chance to look and see what's in there. Site Design Plan Review. This is under Development Standards. New construction. Which have an impact on exterior facade are subject to review and approval by Department of Planning and Zoning. Site Design Plan Review. Now we come to the thirty two fifty rule. New structures, enlargements, alterations. Result in the structure building being in excess of thirty two fifty, of square feet of floor area, are subject to us. The the three thousand two hundred and fifty does not exclude the square footage in basements that are underground. Uninhabitable attic space. Now that has been struck by the new legislation. So that's not relevant, and I'm not good enough to be able to get rid of that. Or accessory structures, okay? There is an accessory structure that's proposed for this lot. That's not part of our purview. All right, this was not built before two thousand five. Here are the following guidelines. Their design should be compatible with historic character and design. Should promote the existing spatial and visual qualities, such as what they may be. I'm not quite sure what that means. But including the height and the scale of buildings, their orientation, spacing, site coverage, and exterior features such as porches, roof pitch. And so forth, okay? They should be compatible with the historic character and design of the area. Two, they shall observe the established historic front setbacks and building heights. If any, for the block on which they are proposed. All new structures shall have bulk, massing, and scale similar to the structures or buildings on the block face. And it shall preserve and enhance the vernacular streetscape. Of the neighborhood. Uh, it's not an historic or contributing structure. The design and enlargements shall be compatible. With the distinguishing contributing characteristics of the majority of the surrounding properties on the block face. I'm sorry, that should have been. Um, highlighted. And this last part has to do with the demolition, which is a subissue in this case, but we're not talking about it. It doesn't concern us. So um, this is, by the way, in our, in our, in the, in the Google Drive. I'm sorry, I should leave this up. It's in the Google Drive under Eastport thirty two fifty. So if you want to review it and sort of, you know, savor it. You can, okay? Mr. B, Mr. Bellamy? All right, we're good. All right. Okay, I'm going to.
Got it.
You okay?
Yep, got it. Thanks.
Does that help?
Yeah, that does.
All right, good. Stop share. All right, we're back on target here. Um. We now turn to um community, to the people who wish to testify, um, who have signed up to testify and are present tonight. I would say it's nine o'clock. It's been two hours since we began. I would suggest that we take a uh ten minute. Um, break. Everybody do what they need to do, and we shall reconvene in ten minutes. Okay? Everybody good?
Okay, and I'll join you at the next meeting, okay?
All right, good.
Thank you. Good night, everyone. Thank you.
Good night, sir.
Good night. Thank you.
Cut my video. I'm prepared to begin again. Ms. Butler, Mr. Riley?
I'm here.
Mr. Riley? Mr. Riley?
Present and accounted for.
Okay.
Much to your chagrin, I know.
Well, you're all refreshed. That's good. All right, we're ready to begin again, and we're ready to begin with community, um, with the people who've uh signed up to testify or. And I um. Have created a short list uh so that we begin with uh people who uh I think could be uh most helpful, but then everybody will get their chance. So I will call people as um. Um, to the lectern, so to speak. Um, and here's the list that I have so far. Uh, Mr. Sullivan, Tobias Sullivan, and then Jackie. Mr. Sullivan, Tobias Sullivan, and then Jackie Wells, and then Ms. Carmel Connolly, Barbara Beck, the Shoemaker family, Mr. Butler, and there are many more. But for now, I think that should be enough to get us started. So if we could, Mr. Jacques, if you could put Mr. Tobias Sullivan in before us, we can get.
Mr. Mr. Alderman, do you want to start with Roth Alderman Arnett before that or no?
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Arnett. Let's listen to Mr. Arnett. As a matter of courtesy to our alderpeople, our elected officials, we allow them to testify first. Because they have so many other, you know, they're busy and we'd like to hear from them. They represent, Mr. Arnett represents this ward, and he's probably very familiar with the issues here. Mr. Arnett.
Thank you.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm Ross Arnett. I live at 529 Sixth Street. As you say, I'm the alderman for the ward, but I should note I'm also a nearby neighborhood neighbor. I live adjacent to the subject property. I want to start by offering my condolences to the commissioners receiving one hundred thirty seven pages of comments and going to hear a long list of comments tonight. The only observation I would make, having gone through the package, is this. I find that interesting that most of the negative comments on the project come from the neighbors and the positive one largely from people who don't live in the city. Having said that, I want to provide briefly a little context. Does Alex have his hand up? No. A little context for the legislation and specifically the thirty two fifty rule. The R two N C district actually started as a historic district of application prepared for Dino Donna Hole to make this a preservation area. It didn't pan out for a number of reasons. So Mayor Moyer had the planning director of the time, John Harrison, convert the historic district proposal into an overlay conservation district. I think the staff report on the application does an excellent job of enumerating the provisions of the proposed process for the R two N C. As I said, I've been involved with this legislation for a long time, eighteen years, and was very directly involved with the derivation of the thirty two fifty rule. The planning department started to get a get more permit application for large houses on our standard fifty by hundred twenty five, hundred twenty foot lots in Ward Eight, even with setbacks and even today, much larger buildings can fit on a lot that are currently occupied with existing structures. I was asked to do analysis by Josh Cohen, and I worked with the Estat data to come up with the building spaces on each lot in the R two N C district. And that averaged out to a building size on the lots of two thousand one hundred and sixty seven square feet. There was a lot of controversy in the ECA and other places about what to do with that. So Dirk Garretts of the planning staff and I updated the city code with the thought that any building that is fifty percent larger than the average size house in the lot, i.e. thirty two fifty, should be reviewed by a body of peers such as the Planning Commission. And that's why we're here tonight. By the way, the thirty two fifty definition written by Director Kubiak and passed by us on the council last night really clarifies that it's the size of the box that matters. It's what you see from outside, regardless of what's going in. So it's the volume mass contained within the length, width, and height of the building. That is what the public sees as driving by the property. As that setting that up as context, I do have some specific comments, and there are not many, on the staff report itself. And I'll send these to you. I was scrambling to write them up today, but I'll send them on for whatever they're worth. On page two, at forty two, four thousand two hundred and twenty two square feet, the app, the application is hardly de minimis. This building is twice as large as the average house in the district and over a third larger than the threshold itself. On pa, page three, the staff report continues to cite the size of the building is thirty two ninety six. But the application, as Mr. Pline accurately points out before you, is for four thousand four hundred and twenty two square feet. On page five, the report references block building heights, and those were disputed by during the Board of Appeals, and you heard testimony earlier that they were approximated. They are inaccurately represented, in my view, and I think by actual measurement, overstating many of the houses on the height of the houses on the block face by one or two or even three feet and understating the actual height of the building as it's built, which is thirty five feet, even though this application says thirty. These measurements certainly need to be certified as you make your finding. The staff report finds the new structure proportionate in scale and width with other structures on the neighborhood. I and many others disagree, but that's what you'll be considering. On page six of the staff report, it states that the bulk of the dwelling mass is step back. This admits that the adjacent low home exposes the house for full street review. And that, again, impacts the the impact of the this on the R two N C formulation. I'll close on the staff report by saying overall, the staff report seems to downplay the enormity of the proposed structure placed in most any residential neighborhood in the city, let alone in the R two N C. Again, that's for you to decide. I believe Mr. Pline distilled this well. This is an application for a building before you of four thousand two hundred and twenty two feet. The question for you is, what does a building, when does, at what point does a building exceed the intended scope of the R two N C? I hope I was uncharacteristically brief. I'm open for questions, and I will submit my written remarks.
Any questions of Mr. Arnett? I gather that you think that you have some personal opinion about this bill, this application?
I do. I think the building is too big. It is too irregular. The roof line is a circus. And I do think a building full of balconies, as you can see in the plans, is not characteristic of the neighborhood. I do think there are many things that could be done to mitigate some of these problems, and we're going to leave that in your good hands.
Oh, well, thank you. I was hoping for a recipe, but thank you. All right. Any questions of Mr. Arnett? By the way, sir, this may be your last appearance as Alderman Arnett, right?
It very well be, yes.
Thank you, sir. Your appearances are always informative.
Thank you. I hope so.
Yeah, good. Mr. Riley does have a hand up. You're muted, Steve. Mr. Riley, mute, unmute.
Unmute. Am I unmuted now?
Yes.
Mr. Arnett, before you sail off into the sunset and count your millions for all the service that you've provided to this city, we don't want to let your institutional knowledge and all of the experience lose itself in your in your wake. So I'm just curious, this particular application, aside from our opinions and our feelings, it is it, is it, I, I, I would like you to acknowledge that it is an unusual case. It's not a typical case, especially as it pertains to the fact that it was already approved and then changed and approved and changed. And it seems like along the way, the applicant has abided by the the rules, and they were approved, and we find ourselves at this state now. So regardless of what we think should be or could be, I'm just curious, like, you understand the history of this particular case. Mr. Fulton has done a really good job of articulating like the the legality of it. I mean, I just, before you roll out, like, give us a little more insight and be really, really like thoughtful on behalf of the city. Don't leave this to us to pick up the pieces of something that was decided before I ever heard about it and before you roll out, because I think that this is a precedent-setting opportunity, but also like a really important one, because it seems like Mr. Hyman has abided by most of all the things, and some things have changed, and Diane has helped me understand more of where it started and where we've become to, but I just feel like it's a, it's an important inflection point and where somebody like you have been around for a lot longer than me has some thoughts, and I would just defer to you to give me a little more.
Since you asked, I will be candid. First of all, I want to note that neither Mr. Meekins nor Director Jakubiak were involved for most of this process, and so they're picking it up. And I saw Mike, who I really admire as a planner, struggling to answer some of your questions. He just wasn't there, and it really wasn't clear on many of the iterations what the size of the building was and what the floors were and what was going on on the floors. This application has a long and somewhat tawdry history to it, which I agree with Mr. Pline is not before you, but I will note that most of the changes in all of the different iterations came from the applicant, not from the city. So if there's been delay, it's been delay on the part of the applicant in asking for numerous changes and additions to the building. I also want to note that the original application was for a partial demolition in addition to the building. And in the middle of the night, without us residents, including aldermen, knowing it all of a sudden became a full demolition. I will note that Tom Smith noted that the engineering report that allowed it to be demolished because of foundation issues exists in every single house on the block, including my own. My house does not sit on a foundation on the back half. So even the report, the engineering report that allowed the demolition has some suspicion to it. Throughout the application process, anyone who actually critically examines the measurements being submitted by the applicant and his architect, find them questionable. This is the tallest building on the street, by none, and by a considerable margin, about the margin of the administrative request. And many of the buildings on the street on block face are smaller, much smaller, including the building on on the side next to me, across from me. So I would urge you really to stick to Mr. Pline's notion that you've got a tough enough job ahead of you to deal with the facts and the the size of the building as being presented. But I would also encourage you not to listen to a sob story, and it's what I'm hearing, about the things that the city did or the citizens did. The ECA has not reviewed this plan's projects, project since two thousand and twenty one. To say that the ECA delayed this project is just flat out wrong. They did not. They would like to review the new plan. They'd like to be asked to review this iteration, but they have not. And I think they could offer constructive criticism. So you ask for candid candidacy. I am being candid. You're muted.
Mr. Alderman, I have a quick question. You mentioned the demolition. I know it's a big deal to get a building demolished in Eastport. So that you're saying that the planning and zoning department approved a demolition?
They did, and I think they did. They followed twenty one forty demolitions in the R two N C because they got an engineer's report that said that the foundation was unstable. You can get.
The comments I read said that their, the demolition wasn't approved. And that they, they talked about the, you know, Wallace's engineering report, and apparently it sounds like the applicant just assumed because the foundation wasn't very strong that they could demolish it, but didn't get an approval. So I guess that's really for Mr. Jakubiak.
Which iteration? If you want to get into the history, the twenty twenty one, Tom Smith did deny demolition. And then it went on, and there have been various characters involved in this that shouldn't have been involved in it, including, I believe, the city attorney. And later on, and I asked Tom Smith directly when I saw it coming down, when did this get approved for demolition? And he said, basically, we were told to let it be demolished.
But there's no approval, because I was looking at all the comments and all the information that we were given, and I didn't see that in the packet. So I guess, Mr. Jakubiak, that's one of your questions for the for the end. If you if you can't answer it now, just kind of curious how that happened. Thanks. That's all I have.
Again, the before you is the forty two, forty thousand four hundred and twenty two foot current application that largely, but not fully, reflects the building that's actually in place.
Okay. Okay. Anything else? Good. Thank you, sir.
Right.
Thank you. Mr. Tobias Sullivan.
Bring him forward now, sir.
Okay, I think I'm here.
Yes. Good evening, sir. Good evening.
Yeah, thank you. Good evening as well. So I'm Tobias Sullivan. I'm an architect here in Eastport. We've lived here for about twenty three years. I own five two two Sixth Street, which is the house immediately to the left of this subject property. Myself and my wife Nicole is also an architect. We purchased five two two in twenty oh two and spent a couple of years renovating it, renovating that. I appreciate the chance to speak here on behalf of us, and I think most of the residents along the street. As I've been sort of advising them, a good part of my work is in Eastport. I was also on the ECA Architectural and Zoning Committee. My wife still is. Craig and I overlapped briefly before he departed. So I've sent a letter, which, if you haven't read already, I would please encourage you to do. I'm going to, I had, I had this whole thing about the thirty two fifty, but I think since both opposition and pro parties agree, it is over thirty two fifty. For the record, I agree with the current architects count of the first and second floor at sixteen hundred and forty eight apiece for thirty two ninety six. So I'll skip the thirty two fifty question. I think one of the sort of misdirections that I see going on here is this debate about thirty two fifty. That's not going to be solved tonight. I have some problems with, you know, even the latest ruling myself, so suffice to say we're here because it's over thirty two fifty, but what this doesn't do is that it it doesn't preclude this house having to meet all of the other requirements of section twenty one. So I'm going to speak mostly to twenty one sixty two, twenty B one height. Because that is something I actually have really good documentation on. In the original RNC design, submitted spire architects created. Um, in the original R N C design submitted, uh Spire Architects created a. They, as I believe Craig said, a estimate of ridge heights that showed it was thirty one. Point three is the average, um.
That's the average what? Of the house or of the block?
Uh, the, the houses along the side of the street, so. Uh, it doesn't look at the houses across the street rightly or wrongly. The code's written that you measure the houses along. In this case, the even number side of five hundredth block of Sixth Street. And those numbers are tabulated. I uh reprinted that in my letter, um, believe it's on page two. Um, so this is all well before I own five twenty two, so I was sort of vaguely aware of this project, but. Didn't really get involved until, until the controversy sort of seemed to kick up, um. But it was at that point I went back and I looked at those R N C submissions from twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. And what I found was that this thirty one three, which sort of became gospel, is not accurate at all, um. For instance, my home, five twenty two was called out as thirty three feet tall in that ta- in that table. When in fact, it's a little less than twenty six feet tall. Which is a seven foot delta. I mean, that's a whole, potentially a whole nother story. And as it happens, three of the other houses along the side of the street are former clients of mine, so. I have a pretty, pretty good idea what they are and um. At this point, there was enough neighborhood concern, we went and did what Spire had not done. Which is just hire a surveyor to come in, so we commissioned Stephen Jupiter's surveyor to come in. And provide actual shot measured heights of the writ of the street side. And what we found was that all of the houses were greatly exaggerated in their height. Uh, one by over nine feet for an average of five point nine feet of height, um. So to, you know, in the E C A letter, they urged. Planning and zoning to follow up on this, to encourage more documentation. Sadly, that never happened. But what I want to make real clear is that planning and zoning was fed a bunch of numbers that were. Really not accurate at all. I've had to do these same measurements myself. And, you know, I've knocked on doors and asked them incredulous homeowner, can I measure, you know, can I hook a. Uh, tape measure to your ridge. Um, I've never been denied. I've certainly got plenty of looks, but it's not impossible. And before we had commissioned uh Mister Jupiter, I went around with a laser tape measure, uh. Uh, finder that I have and I shot as best I could, the average of the street. And I sent that to the director in early of July in an email and I said, hey, heads up. These numbers seem really off. Um, my estimate ended up being within half. A foot of what Mister Jupiter would later confirm. Um, so this idea that it's this big burden that, you know, is tough to overcome. Just simply isn't true and this, again, to quote Mister Martin, the ignore exorbitant expense of saying. Also just isn't true. We, we paid six hundred and fifty dollars, which I'm guessing is about an hour. Of Mister Fulton's time to get the survey, which provided true accurate measurements of what's going on here, so. You know, um. When you consider uh the section about height. This house is six feet taller than the average of the block face, so. You know, uh, there's just not another way to say it. It doesn't comply and this latest document that Spire is presented with the ridge heights. I think put at twenty seven, which is closer, but we're, you know, still off, um. So, you know, had this house been properly vetted. And again, this is a self inflicted wound. This isn't, you know, this isn't E C A out to get anybody, it's just. Architect, the, the city never did their job and now we're sort of asked as a community to say, well, you know. You know, mistakes were made, tough luck. Um, if, if you see all of this and can still say that section twenty one sixty two twenty B one height. Complies. You know, there's nothing I, I'm going to be able to tell you tonight that would probably change your mind, um. So, you know, from that standpoint alone, um, I would urge you to turn the project down. And then as Ross, you know, uh hinted at. This house was torn down as far as I can tell without the proper um certifications, um, and so many of the twenty one. Uh, sections talk about the preservation of the streetscape and in my mind, the best way to preserve the streetscape would have been to preserve the house. We've still never been, you know, given a proper engineer's report. If you look at that email. Uh, the most senior building inspector comes out and says, no, this isn't a good candidate for demolition, um. Yeah, and then the thing comes down anyway. Um, we've had to save, in my practice, we've had to save so much worse houses. Um, you know, it is almost impossible to tear something down Eastport, so. You know, uh, to this day, you know, we still had, you know, we were still getting these measurements suggested. As guestimates and that's just not good enough at this point. And the other thing I would say about the latest graphic. Is that they try to make this point that I, I, or I read this as like anything behind the established ridge height is okay. Where I think there, the, the relevant part of code is that anything behind. The ridge height of an existing structure can maintain that height. Not that anything behind that structure isn't still subject to height limitations, so. This project should have and should be held to twenty six feet, which is the. Default code height and it's way over that by their own admission, they say. Thirty one on the first page of their um narrative, but all the drawings still show thirty. And like I say, it's just way over height, so, um. You know, on that one point alone, I would urge you to turn this project down, because this is a house that is just grossly out of scale. In every way with the neighborhood.
What, what is, what, what, what was the average height of homes um on the street that your surveyor found? I, I, I missed.
It's, I believe on the second page, but it's a, I think it's twenty five point four.
Okay. Okay, and Spire is saying that the.
Um, well, the R N C application said thirty one point three was the average. That actually even wasn't done right to code. They were supposed to include the existing house, which they didn't do, um. And I, again, I, you know, I don't have an explanation. I mean, they themselves, I think, said estimate or guestimate, I'm not sure, but. Um, you know, uh, they're just wildly off. There's just not, in my mind, there's. Um, you know, come over and see my seven foot nine dining room ceilings. I mean, these are relatively small old houses. Um, so I believe it was, um. Well, I, I know it to be grossly overestimated, so.
Okay, is there anything you wish to address other than in addition to height?
Um, yeah, I mean, uh, there's some nitpicky things. There's something about the existing front. Windows and doors being the same. That's also just not true, because they put this balcony back that, or. They put a balcony on the second floor on the front that, you know, used to just be a window, now it's a door, so. Um, and that was something that had gotten deleted in the um, R N C. Process and then sort of found its way back in, um. But yeah, I, I, I think the big takeaway is that had this project been held to the twenty six foot standard. Uh, we wouldn't even be talking about the third floor, because there wouldn't be one, um. And I think that's what this house needs to be. I think the very simple solution to making this house comply. Uh, I don't have a problem with a few extra square feet between the first and second floor. Take the, you know, take the roof off, take the. All the living space above the second floor away, lose the balconies, and I think you've got a pretty compliant. House, certainly something I would support, um, moving forward. Um, but I don't think you can approve, you know, you're asking to approve. You know, depending on the definition, you're being asked to approve. You know, almost twelve hundred square feet of overage, which is, you know, the size of, you know, several of the houses along the street, so. And height and mass and bulk, this just doesn't comply.
Thank you, sir. Any questions?
Yeah, I've got a quick question. I was trying to, uh, I was looking at section twenty one, twenty two, oh, oh eight oh. Um, these design standards that we have to review and consider. And yeah, I get it that there might be a house that's much bigger than the thirty two fifty rule, but, you know. Can conform to these design standards. And one of them that I had a question about, I was trying to figure out, looking at the. Uh, plans that we received. Um, so to minimize adverse impacts, the proposed structures are cited in order to minimize any adverse impact upon surrounding areas. Um, and then it talks about age, critical area, proposed design minimizes adverse impacts. To resources in the critical area overlay, um, such as streams, wetlands, goes on and on. Uh, mature stands of trees, uh, trees and wildlife habitat. So I noted that, um. The total woods required to preserve, to be preserved on the site was uh twelve hundred square feet or fifteen percent of the woods. Needed to be retained, and I know you live next door, um, did they preserve any of these trees?
There is only one tree left on the property, um. It certainly doesn't agree with this latest grading plan, um. Uh, so it's, it's a small.
Tree, like a big canopy tree or no?
No, well, and maybe one day it'll be, but right now it's about maybe an eight foot maple tree. Between the proposed garage and the Halitz residence on the other side. Um, every other tree has been cut down, um. Which, again, does not mash up with what I've seen this grading plan. Which I'm seeing for the first time, you know, two days ago, but, um. Now, the current grading plan does not reflect what's on the ground. All the trees were taken down. Including a um box elder that was. As much of my property is theirs, but I think disappeared before I had really taken full ownership of the house, so.
Because um, the applicant also says that there's been, there's no um stormwater management on site um in the application. And of course, that's absurd, because trees are stormwater management. So, um, I'm just trying to figure out how, if we don't have a copy of the grading permit, we are supposed to understand how the stormwater was, was. You know, how these calculations were done. I guess that's not really that question for you, it's more for Chris Jakubiak, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, that's a very complicated question, but I can confirm for you that. There is one small tree left, everything else is gone.
Okay, and so the lock coverage went from uh being eight thousand square feet to four thousand square feet, so they've used total of fifty percent of the site. And that's with the trees actually coming down.
Um, I mean, as I understand it, the impervious is rated fifty percent, um. I, you know, I, I can't really dispute or confirm that, but, um. Uh, but yeah, if, if leaving a stand of trees was part of their overall. Uh, stormwater management plan, then yeah, I would say it needs revision, because that's just not what's on the ground.
And then my other question has to do with being able to measure the ridge heights. It sounds like. Uh, and the square footage, um, the staff report explains that. Now there's this new um measurements or some kind of app that allows you to measure. Square footage and things like that. Is there some kind of um way to. Basically double check how much impervious surface is on a site? Because uh, when you look at the plan, this enormous plan that we got um sent to us. It just, when you eyeball, it looks like there's more than fifty percent lock coverage. And I know that in the past, planning and zoning doesn't go and check the lock coverage and they don't measure it. Do you, is there a, an easy way to start measuring or to measure the lock coverage in this case, because it does have to do with, you know, the stormwater management?
Um, uh, not really. I, 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 I think I'll just say I'm not the person to ask that, um. You know, in times, yeah, I know, in, in times past, I've sort of just snapped something to scale and. Gone over it with my own software to get a rough idea, um. The previous grading plan, as I recall, seemed to check out with what they had done and I, you know. I don't, you know, I don't think the engineer of that grading plan is at fault. I just think that. Uh, a lot of trees were removed that were called for to be saved, so that would obviously need to be revised.
Okay, any other questions? Mister Riley?
Um, I just want to make sure that we get back on track to what are we actually doing here tonight? And what are we trying to make the decisions for? Because I'm looking at. I appreciate that everybody else is on a timeline, but it's nine fifty P M. And I'm just curious what our intended outcome is for a meeting like it is tonight, and I believe we have a couple other people that have some things to say. So I'm just trying to figure out what it is we're trying to get accomplished tonight. And whether or not we need to extend it beyond tonight, but I feel like the meeting tonight has gotten a little out of. Um, sync with what my understanding was we were trying to get done, and I'm not exactly sure what it is we're trying to accomplish now.
Okay, okay, I, I thought if I can reflect briefly on. This previous testimony, I thought that the height information was quite apropos and relevant. Okay, okay, what we're trying to get done tonight is we're trying to keep progress moving. I've said that we, uh, I'm going to cut things off at ten thirty and we can easily reconvene on November sixth in city council chambers.
What is the decision that the, that we are trying to come to? As a, as a, as a commission, is it this particular application? Because I feel like a lot of policy stuff has seeped into. And I just, I'm trying to figure out what my job is at this point. I'm getting. Listening to all the different opinions and I feel like it's going to get worse, not better.
Well, that may be, but it's this application. Whether to approve it, deny it, or approve it with some conditions, okay?
Yep.
No different than usual. Okay?
Mister Waldman, can I make one procedural comment? It's purely procedural and I'll keep it quick.
Yes, sir.
Mister Sullivan and everyone else that's lined up to speak this evening have every right to do so, but it is just public testimony. They're not parties to this application. They didn't enter themselves as, as in, in appearance as a protestant. I have no ability to cross examine any of them. It's purely just public comment. You're, you're welcome to ask as many questions as you want, but I can't cross examine anything they're saying.
You definitely cannot cross examine witnesses who appear.
Hundred percent.
Passed when, when somebody else really crossed the line some years ago. However, however, at the end, if you want to take notes and you want to provide some rebuttal, I'll be more than happy to give you the time.
I figure it would just be in closing and I appreciate it. I just wanted to make sure.
You know.
Thank you, thank you, Chairman.
Of course, we want to hear things fully. Good, all right, can we move on to, as I said, uh, Miss Jackie Wells?
Sir, I don't see Jackie Wells here.
Okay. Okay, then I will move on to, uh, Carmel Connolly.
Carmel Connolly, I do not see a Carmel Connolly either.
How about a Barbara Beck?
No.
Bobby, if you click on the, the participants and then attendees, you can see all the people sort of in the waiting room. Who are, have joined and who are not participants at the moment.
There's one person I do have is just labeled iPhone, which, um, if your name is said, please hit the little hand. Who's next on your list, though, Mister Waldman?
Are we waiting for something?
No, I was, I was asking who's next on your list. I don't, none of the ones named you said so far here.
Then I think you, you should start going down the list of whoever you have of, who, who's stayed on and is available.
Okay, I'm just going to go in the order that they were, they were sent in here. So I'll go to Raquel. So I'll go to, uh, Raquel Marsh.
Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, I just wanted to, um, speak briefly. It's been a long evening, so just trying to not repeat what has been said. Um, but as, but also to include, hold on, I'm, I apologize. I hear this beeping, I want to make sure I'm not setting off my alarm.
Alarm on.
Okay, as I've been waiting and I apologize, I just entered my home. So, um, the construction and completion of the property of five-one-eight-sixth Street has experienced significant and prolonged delays. Which have imposed substantial hardships on the Hyman family. I know we're not talking about what's happened in the past and different things, but I'm just bringing the reality of the situation. Um, despite the full compliance with the City of Annapolis regulations, as can be determined by the approvals received, these delays have unfairly penalized them. Over the course of more than a decade, the city has approved the site, designed multiple times, even as leadership within the Department of Planning and Zoning has changed. The design of the home is contemporary and thoughtfully conceived, and once completed, it'll contribute positively to the surrounding property values, despite ongoing resistance from the neighbors in the actual Eastport area. Um, the Hymans are constructing their forever home, a deeply personal and long-term investment, which includes not just for them, their grandchildren, their parents, and others. Um, it allows them to keep their family close and avoid having to unnecessarily move them to a nursing home or different establishment, depending on what happens. Um, is this heartening to me? Um, I'm not a resident of Eastport, and I did hear the comment from the alderman about being a resident of Annapolis, but I was a resident of Annapolis for thirty-five of my fifty-two years. And I am currently a resident of Severna Park, and I do appreciate the size, the architecture of Annapolis. It's my forever home, and I will always consider Annapolis my home, and I do have a residence there as well. However, I think that some of the, um, reasoning behind, um, what has happened and what is to be determined is, um, a lot of opinion. How, but it also is something that if I'm trying not to repeat what you've already said. It's, it's, as I, the city worked diligently and, and daily in their departments of planning and zoning and the director's office and those different things. The Hymans have worked with them to maintain that Eastport appeal and intake. This commission, and I suggest this commission considers not just what is, what has happened before, but what is currently constructed and what the city's regulations are in the grandfathering dwellings, according to the previous approved codes. I'm baffled, uh, and it may not, and it may be me being an electrical engineer versus an architectural engineer by the city's approval of a building project that when the code is changed, now the building is held accountable for. It, it, it's just a little baffling to me, so I just asked the commission to make a reasonable decision. Um, we're talking about not just, um, what has happened, but we're talking about a family putting all that they have into a dwelling and looking for that forever home, and now however many years out, um, I've heard ten, um, I've heard different things that you're, that they have expended funds, expended time, the stress and those different things trying to just accomplish something that's been approved. Um, I, I just asked for a reasonable decision, just for everybody to have a reasonable head. Um, that's all. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for giving me the opportunity to speak.
You, you're most welcome, thank you. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Chair, next will be, uh, Bill Evans. Evans, you there?
There you go. To get off mute, Mr. and Mrs. Evans.
Okay, we're here. Hello?
Hello?
Yes.
Can you hear me? We're here, we're waiting for you. Yes, sir, I'm sorry about that. Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Good evening. I would love, I would love to say that I know how hard that Gerald had worked for this home, to build itself a dream home. I remember when this home and the owner of the home, I remember when he decided that he wants to sell that home. And, uh, Gerald's grandfather and him, and the guy, he used to own the home, they were very close. And he said that he wants and, uh, that he want to sell the home to Gerald. And Gerald told him, yes. And I came over and I did the work to clean up the ground and everything ran there. And, and while I was over there working and lady across the street, I know she crossed the street because that's where she came from. And, uh, they came up to me and then asked me, do I know whose house it is, and you know what they're gonna do to it and so forth and so on? And complained. Then it was complaining about the tree was falling into the street. Gerald told me, come over, take a look at it. Came over, took a look at it, little small little tree, and I'll take care of that. Then here come another lady walking down the street. She want to know whose house it is and complain about what they're gonna, ask me what they're gonna do to the house. You know how big the house gonna be and so forth and so on. I said, ma'am, I can't tell you that, I don't know. I can't tell you what size the house gonna be, I don't know. But I told Gerald, I said, Gerald, seem like you gonna have a problem. I said, because you got people that complaining already. It seem like they want to know all about the house and whatnot. And I said, I can't tell them nothing. It's a shame that we keep coming to the meetings all the time and hear the same thing and stop this man the hardest he worked, the money he put into this house. And they find every little thing to trying to stop him. Come on. Let's be for real. We know what this is all about. We know what this is all about. Let's be for real. You complain about little something that, that you know what, you know what the code say? Y'all prove it. Y'all prove the audit act. Y'all prove everything. Ain't nothing that he did was wrong. Y'all prove everything. Why is we still here? Why are we still doing the same thing? Over and over. He's not building no shack. He built a beautiful house. He make the city look good, make Eastport look good. I came down to, from down the country, South County. When my parents moved up, we were moving to Eastport on Second Street. Second and Eastern Avenue. I know all about Eastport. Fifteen years in Eastport. I know the family used to live in the same house that Gerald bought. I used to go to the store up on the corner there by the red light. So my point is, Eastport is a beautiful place. Gerald wanted to build a nice house for Eastport. But thank you for everyone that listened. May God bless you all.
Well, thank you, sir. Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
All right. We can move on to the next person, maybe?
Chair, the next person is, uh, Mr. George Trotter.
Can I just, can I just say something real quick?
While we're waiting, sure.
While we're waiting for Mr. Trotter, I just want to recognize Mr. Evans, Ms. Evans. Your history goes far beyond my time here in the community. I appreciate everything that you just said, and I understand that politics don't always uh, align with culture and truth. And what, what got us here won't get us there. So I appreciate you taking the moment to help connect the dots and give us a little connective tissue, I appreciate you so much. Um, I'm not, I'm not saying that anybody's right or wrong, I'm just giving you a hot second to recognize the fact that you got a story to tell, and, um, I do think it's relevant. I don't think it's necessarily relevant to policy and what needs to happen. But how it affects you and your family, I just don't want to miss the opportunity to say thank you, that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have Mr. Trotter here now.
Good evening, everybody. To members of the Planning Commission, the City of Annapolis, and all who have gathered here this evening, we've heard a lot of testimony, a lot of facts, a lot of substantiation, pro and con. My name is George Trotter. I'm a retired teacher and assistant principal at Anne Roney County Public Schools, specifically Annapolis High, Brunick Senior High School, Arundel High, Southern Senior High, and the various middle schools throughout the county. I'm also, uh, member of the community, the Annapolis community for over fifty years. I currently live in Arnold, Maryland. I grew up on Clay Street and Old Fourth Ward. And I've known the family of Mr. Gerald Hyman, many of whom were and are military veterans, including his late grandfather, Dodo Hyman Senior, who just passed this week. This was a hard-working, involved and respected nuclear family that Gerald was raised in. Gerald Hyman Junior is by, is a byproduct of that family unit who played by the rules in securing a legal building permit issued by the City of Annapolis for five-eighteen-sixth Street, his dream house. Additionally, Mr. Hyman requested modifications, minor modifications, which were also approved by the city. It was quite disconcerting for me to attend meeting after meeting of the Board of Appeals to continue to see the can being kicked down the road time and time again at every meeting. Not too long ago, I was given a personal tour of the five-eighteen-sixth Street property. It is fantastic and extremely well-constructed. Architecturally, it is similar to other homes in the area and fits and meets the street setbacks. Mr. Hyman has been working since two thousand and sixteen to complete this project and has met delay after delay with the site design and approvals of the settings. In all fairness, Mr. Hyman should be given the green light to complete his dream. And I thank you for your time, and I thank you for your dedication to making sure that Mr. Hyman is treated fairly. Thank you, and have a good evening.
I think that Mr. Hyman will be treated fairly, given all of the testimony and all of the people who've trained their sights on this. And, uh, yours as well, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Chair, next we have, uh, Mr. Carl Snowden.
Mr. Snowden, you're, you're on.
Thank you so very much, uh. Mr. Chairman, wow, what a meeting this has been. I now realize why I decided not to get on the city council anymore. Have to spending twelve years on the city council and just kind of watching the process. I want to just take a moment to first, uh, thank Commissioner Rollin, who just kept saying over and over again that really important question, what are we here, what are we trying to accomplish? And if I have heard correctly, the facts, and I think I understand a little bit about how the politics work, to use the term that's been used earlier. Um, and the question of politics and fairness and justice, can it all happen? And we'll soon find out, because the Planning and Zoning Commission ultimately have to make a decision. What apparently is not in dispute by anybody is that there were approvals that were made previously on a number of occasions, whether those approvals was appropriate or not, uh, certainly can remain be, to remain open, but they were approved. If I heard the facts right, I understand that Mr. Hyman has invested about five hundred thousand dollars, it's a lot of money, nine years of his life, um, to try to get this particular approval done. And for a variety of reasons, that did not happen. What I'm hoping that Mr. Fulton has done is really making sure that the record is complete. That there's a real complete record here. Because at some point, there has to be a review and a final decision must be made regarding this particular project. There are three things I want to say that, and I'll start off by making it real clear, that's not necessarily relevant to this discussion, but I think it's important. We keep saying, I keep hearing rather, let's forget about the past, that we're not here, whatever's happened in the past, uh, that's not part of the focus. I must respectfully disagree. Uh, the past is important, knowing what the history is important. And as someone who lived in Eastport, in fact, on the very street, Ross Annett, I don't know whether he's still with me or not, or with us or not, he mentioned that he lives on Sixth Street. My mother-in-law lived on Sixth Street. I remember Sixth Street, uh, when we were growing up, it's very different than the Sixth Street that exists today. I remember who used to live on Sixth Street. I know the demographics that have changed as a result of things that have occurred in the City of Annapolis. What I really asked the commission to consider, um, you've got a tough problem, one that has been handed to you and is not one of your own making. I really wish that previously, this had come before the commission, where it could have been a straight-up-and-down vote on whether or not, uh, to improve the height requirements and improve the original request. It did not. And after a long process, it's now back before the Planning and Zoning, excuse me, be back before the Planning and Zoning Commission. One of the things, uh, Mr. Chairman, and I presume there's a reason why it was Zoomed, but I can tell you, had this been a public meeting at City Hall, you would have seen hundreds of people turning out in support of Mr. Hyman. And it would come from all over the City of Annapolis. And the one thing that would have been central to every testimony that you heard from citizens who for a variety of reasons won't be testifying tonight because we're doing it by Zoom, but had it been a public meeting in a public facility like City Hall, I can guarantee you there have been a hundred plus people lined up. And the one thing you would hear from everybody who was speaking is they want this commission to treat Mr. uh, Hyman fairly. And in their request that he be treated fairly, they're really be saying something much larger. There's no secret at all that in the past, African-Americans have been treated differently. There's no, no way of getting around it. Um, not only have they been treated differently, but they've been treated unfairly. And, and just listening to the people who've come forward, who've hinted at it, I'm just being very frank with it. People feel very strongly that there's underlying factors here that shouldn't be. And I just simply want to say to the commissioners, I recognize your volunteers, you do a lot of work. When you take this up for consideration, I think you need to balance two things. One, the law, which is clearly something that should be done, but also two, the history of this project. The fact that it's taken nine years, the fact that they've had all of these particular mistakes that were made. There's no need to finger point, but I don't think anybody on Planning and Zoning would disagree that there were mistakes that were made by staff people. Mr. Hyman was told to do certain things. He did what he was told time and time again. None of the things he was told uh, was things that did not cost him money. Five hundred thousand dollars is a lot of money to invest in a property. So I would conclude my remarks by just simply again stating, uh, Commissioner Rowley, thank you so very much for again putting in, putting the central question here. What are we here for? And I think the response I would have for that, Commissioner Rowley, we're here to find out whether we can find justice uh, here in Annapolis. Thank you for the opportunity.
Mr. Riley? You're muted.
Unmute? You can hear me now?
Yes.
I'm so sorry that you all have to keep listening to me talk, but Mr. Snowden, I appreciate you so much for all the things that you've done for the four decades or so that you've been a part of our community. You've definitely shined a light on things that most people would not take the time to do. Mostly on, uh, 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 in, 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 in regard to your community, which I grew up as a poor kid in Cape St. Clair. I don't feel like your community is a whole lot different than my community. When it comes to a meeting like this, I just want to squash something that you, I'm not saying you said it, but I'm gonna say you insinuated it, which is that we're doing this by, um, Zoom or otherwise to limit the number of voices that might come out and say things in public. And I just think that that is not a, that is not a genuine representation of what we're actually trying to do. And I don't care what side of the aisle you file on, like, I agree with you, we would probably have more voices. It just so happened that this particular was a better venue or a, 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 a better, uh, 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 voice for the rest of us to get together because we've been trying so hard through the summer to get things done. I'm happy that we got this one done. It's also a very unique, um, microcosm of an issue that addresses something that's larger in our community, which is this particular issue that happens to hit on something that addresses precedent. Right? So, um, we're, we're inheriting something that, um, people before us, which happens all the time in politics. They made decisions and we have to try to make the, we have to try to enforce the decisions or change the decisions on what happened to Mr. Hyman, say, four years ago. And now we're addressing it with a different lens and different eyes. Um, I also think that we're also setting the precedent for what comes after us, which is where Alex and Diane are really good, but I think I'm gonna speak on my, my colleague Tommy's and my perspective, which is certain decisions were made before we got here, which I believe that we need to live up to. And Mr. Hyman was granted certain provisions and, and so on. So I think that there's two things at work here. One is the bigger picture of what you're talking about, which is fairness and justice. And then some which are just very specific to the case that we're looking at today, which I think is, um, you know, part and parcel to the whole, but I think that, um, we're inheriting, you call it a poison pill. We're trying to figure out how to move forward from here. So my personal opinion is, we made a decision and we allowed somebody to make, um, some decisions that they had to make that were a big cost, um, provisions to them. And if we change the rules along the way, we might need to consider grandfathering them in. But we don't want to set bad, bad precedent moving forward. But ultimately, I think, I, I, what I want, one of the things I want to do with you is just to kind of remove the fact that the commission and the decisions that we're making are somehow culturally divided. I don't believe that they are. I think that the city is doing a pretty good job of balancing those things. I personally am not, uh, uh, making my own decisions on the basis of um, culture or certainly not race. Mr. Hyman, I love the fact that he's an Eastport resident. He happens to be of a certain race because it really challenges is the, 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 the paradigm of the decisions that have been made, but I think we're in the right, uh, inflection point, and I'm not sure that, um, we're gonna make that decision tonight, but I think that we've had a lot of good um, opinion that has come in, especially if somebody like you is coming in and lending your opinion, then I think that it gives us a lot of, um, opportunity to really consider where we are, but ultimately, the law has to be the law. And you know that as well as anybody else. So the only decision now is like whether this particular case has to honor what was decided then or what we're doing moving forward. So, I, I just want to take a moment to appreciate the fact that Mr. Evans and, and you and a lot of people have been around a lot longer than I have. Just want to recognize that and, and say that the decisions that we may make aren't always like from this day forward, and they're certainly not culturally minded or, or socioeconomically driven. It's just, we have to take all the considerations of everybody, so I just want to take a hot second to say thanks.
I really appreciate you doing that, and I really appreciate, um, the fact that you and others have volunteered. I would just simply say, well, I guess the easiest way to do this, having been in the public office, and I know people have to make decisions. And as has been said oftentimes, campaigning is much more easier than governing because governing, you have to bring in a lot of considerations. Um, but one of the things I think, and I keep emphasizing this point, those, if those decisions had no consequences, fine, if they were neutral. And I'm sure Mr. Fulton will make his own point, but I would just simply say, having had some experiences, both as a member of the City Council and the public, that when you rely on the approvals of city officials and you invest money based on those approvals to later be told that those approvals were not appropriate, you've still spent five hundred thousand dollars. And the question becomes, if these decisions were made, even if they were made in, um, with good intentions, but it turns out they were wrong decisions and it cost people, where do citizens find justice? We just say, well, you spent five hundred thousand dollars, took you nine years to get here, too bad. I really hope that the Planning and Zoning Commission, and Mr. Chairman, and I, 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 I'm well aware at ten thirty, uh, we're gonna be closing, but I, I would just ask that people, uh, take an opportunity, give a lot of thought to it, independently of what you've heard, and look for a situation where you can have a win-win situation. I absolutely agree with you, Commissioner Rowley, but President.
Well, I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna, I'm gonna push back just a little more on my colleague, who I value his opinion so much, Mr. Pline.
Uh, let's not get into discussion.
No, I think it's important. I do. I think it's important while we have, we have the relevant players and-
Get into discussion. We've done a lot of it so far. Um, we've heard some things. I think we need to, you know, back off and, and kind of let this thing settle a bit. Um, public hearing is still open. I don't think that it's time to, you know, start making decision-making statements. Let's, let's, let, let's bring this thing to a close. Okay? You'll have plenty of time to talk about it. All right?
I, 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 yes. Generally speaking, I just, I, I have colleagues on, 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 on our board that I can consult, and I just, I, I'm actually curious about Alex's opinion at this particular point because I believe that we have all the stakeholders right now, and I'm willing to go beyond ten thirty just to have a conversation that I think is, I think that Mr. Snowden and, and, and Mr. Hyman and, um,
Okay.
Mr. Fulton deserve a, a little more consideration. I'll say that.
That's fine, but hold on to that for a second. Mr. Snowden, I want to say a couple of things. First of all, um, this meeting is on Zoom because the City Council chambers is not available on the second Thursday of a month. Um, I initially approved a month ago, uh, trying to get in in the beginning, uh, the, the second, uh, third, whatever it is, of, of, of October, and the applicant wasn't ready, and so now we have to deal with this rather cumbersome Zoom situation. Um, the past is the past, um, and it's not at all clear, um, uh, at, at least to me from this, wha- what exactly was or was not approved, okay? So it's one thing to keep saying it was approved, but that's not, apparently from the testimony and, and, and the report from staff, it's not at all clear what was approved and how things began to grow in the course of various revisions. Um, and, and it's also seems to become clear from, um, the various people who've testified that mistakes have been made all over the place and that some of the delays um, really come from everybody and every side. So, um, I think to be, wanna be completely even-handed, and I want to say, I knew nothing about a Mr. Gerald Hyman Junior. I still don't really know anything about him, other than what other people and friends have said. I only saw a set of plans. So in that case, it's very blind justice, okay?
Well, let me say this.
And I will proceed on that, on that course.
Well, Mr. Chairman, just for your information.
Yes.
I just want to clarify something.
Yes.
They went down to City Hall before because I thought it was gonna be a City Hall meeting. And there was no other meeting going on in City Hall. It was absolutely available.
I, I have nothing to do with that. I'm simply told that the second meeting, our second meeting of any month has to be on Zoom.
But my point to you, because you may not have known this, and your commissioners may not, let me just finish the point, sir.
That there may have been many more people there?
No, my point was, yeah, there were people there. There were-
But, but if there were, if we had a public meeting in City Council chambers, there'd be people of all kinds there.
I understand that. I'm not disputing it. There should be people of all kinds. My only point to you was, just to make this very clear.
Okay.
You had indicated that the reason the Zoom meeting was happening tonight because the City Council was not available. And I'm telling you, as someone who went down to City Hall, it was available. Now, I don't know why it became available, but it was available. And the only point I was making, the only point I was making was to make the point that there were people who I know would have shown up at City Hall, who for whatever reason came through Zoom, but it would have been there. And all I was trying to point out to you, I did not want people to believe who would happen to be watching tonight that the six or seven people that testified was limited there. I think Mr. Hyman's support is much more-
Oh, I agree with that. I think that there would be far more people who would testify for it was an in-person meeting. I agree with that. I'm just saying, there would be lots of, lots of people testifying, not just those who'd happen to show up tonight at the City Council chambers. And, and, and I don't think that anybody should engage in any conspiracy theory. I'm just telling you, for two years, three years now, our second meeting of the month has been by Zoom, okay?
Okay.
Great. So press, please spread that news that we didn't, we didn't, we didn't abscond or in anything like that, or we're not hiding. This is, this was a decision that was made weeks and weeks and weeks, uh, years ago. Okay?
Bob, to your, to your point, what, Bob, to your point, uh, can we ask what was approved then? Because you said we don't know exactly what was approved. I mean-
I, I think that if you, you want to ask Mr. Meekins that, he's the person to ask. And when, what was approved and when was it approved? And how did things move along through time? And when did we, what was the first-
I mean, I believe, you know, everybody wants to say that this, you know, the past is the past, but I don't believe that's the case when you have an application that was submitted in two thousand nineteen. You know, so I do want to know
Right.
what was approved. I do want to know the timeline of what it was approved, and, you know, I want to believe there's no racial component to this, but at the same time, if something was approved and we're moving the goalposts, the city's moved, is moving the goalpost.
Well, the question is, what was approved when? Because there were various different kinds of approvals made. As this thing began to, uh, expand in size, you know, with the modifications and the revisions, and so I don't have an answer.
Right. Those are, those are great questions.
Those are the questions.
Those questions need to be answered. And my, you know, my other question is that it seems to me, and somebody can explain this to me, but it seems to me that the rules were changed on Monday.
Okay. And what would be, and what would be the consequence if this application came in under the old rule of measurement?
Right. Well, that's what I want to know. Right.
That's the second question.
That has no effect, that has no effect on it. That, that's a red herring.
It does have an effect on it.
Alex, you're suggesting that the new rules negate anything that happened prior to Monday?
The new rule only has to do with the square footage calculate, this thirty-two fifty square footage calculation. That, it, it doesn't have to do with anything else. It, it, the question of whether it comes to us and-
Does it pertain to this particular applicant?
The, the, the Board of Appeals decided that. That's, and so, and the, whatever, Planning and Zoning couldn't, the department couldn't come to any agreement with the applicant, so it came. The, the other option was to come to us, and that's where it came. So i- if I could, before, before Mr. Gubieck has his hand up, but before that, just to, to finish off this question of the history and stuff, i- i- if I can sort of offer maybe a path forward here is that I think it's, it, it, so what you talked about, Mr. Riley, is what are we doing here? Okay? And I think that's pretty clear. We, and as I mentioned really early on, we were brought this application as if it were, we had never seen anything, and that, that's sort of, we have to, that's, that's, it's the most simplest, we have to decide on that. Now, so however we, we decide that this application meets or doesn't meet the, the code. Then, then there's this whole other issue of the past. So while I'm contradicting myself, uh, in what I said earlier, that the, the past doesn't matter. The past doesn't matter with respect to this application. That is true. The question is, you know, what, when, when you, when you decide, what do, what do you do? And the fact, the fact that the building is already constructed really complicates it. Okay? So i- i- if, if this was just paper and it didn't meet it, you go back to the drawing board, you fix it, you spend some more, you spend some more of your architect's money, and that's just the way that goes. But the fact that, 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 that the house is already constructed is complicated. So whatever we get to, once we get to that point, then there's, I think there's gotta be this other process to decide, okay, what, what happens? But, but that, I don't think we should put that cart before the horse, if you'll excuse the metaphor. I, I think we have to, we have to address the issue at hand and then consider other things. So anyway, that's, so Mr. Gubieck, uh, you-
Like, but maybe, just to add on to that before Chris weighs in, like, there are gonna be gray areas of people who are in process, so the fact that we already approved something and Mr. Hyman, in this case- the fact that we already approved something and Mr. Hyman, in this case, might have invested a half a million dollars into something that was already approved, which we now wouldn't approve, seems to be a little bit of an injustice to him. And there's gonna, there's only going to be a few that are in the, in the mix. But if we have new rules, we have to enforce the, enforce them from the day forward rather than the day backward. You can't just.
There's not a new rule. Steven, there's not a new rule.
Don't, don't get, don't get so wrapped up around what happened on Monday night.
This, okay, I mean, help me, help me.
However you measure it, however you measure it, it's over thirty-two fifty.
Yes.
Old measurement rule, new measurement rule.
Oh, no, I'm not talking about measurement rule. I'm, I'm talking about what was approved at the time where Mr. Hyman said, I'm going to spend money. And I'm not going to spend money.
One of the things that wasn't done.
He's talking about the timeline.
Yeah. Well, hold on. One of the things that wasn't done from the very beginning, R two N C, okay? The architect said that he knows the process. But from the very beginning, if it's over thirty-two fifty square feet, it's supposed to go to the planning commission. Maybe in twenty twenty-one, maybe in twenty twenty-three, maybe in twenty twenty-four, maybe in twenty twenty-five. Finally, in twenty twenty-five, they got the message that actually where it goes is to the planning commission. That's not the fault of the department.
Is that what happened here?
How, how is that not the fault of the department?
That's the fault of the department. Are you kidding me? That's absolutely the fault of the department.
The permit was issued, the house is built.
That's, that's not the, that's not Hyman's fault. That's our fault. Are you kidding me?
Look to staff.
We moved the goalposts.
Look for enough to answer to that.
Chris, I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna, now I'm gonna ask Jakubiec, I'm gonna ask Chris to come in because we moved the goalpost on what we told him that he then put five hundred thousand dollars into or whatever it is. If it's ten thousand dollars, we told him this was the rules then. He started to invest and he moved the, he did, moved himself forward and then we moved the goalpost back and said, oh, no, 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 that's not, you're not allowed to do that. Am I wrong in, in, in assessing this? I'm, I'm just trying to be honest.
Let me, let me just interject. A plan was approved in twenty twenty-one, a site design plan. It had gone through the ECA, it had gone through the staff review, it had gone back and forth between the applicant and the, uh, and the staff.
Was it, was all of that approved at the time?
It was approved in June of twenty twenty-one.
And then was, was the applicant free then?
Let him, let him finish, please.
I'm sorry, but I, no, I have to, no, I have to be Mr. Hyman.
Steve, let, let Chris finish. Let Chris finish.
Steven, you're gonna have to let me finish. It's not gonna be very productive.
Okay.
Um, it was approved in twenty twenty-one. Uh, it was approved after an exhaustive set of review and time and period involved. It was approved by our chief of current planning. His name was Tom Smith. He had decades of experience working as the chief of current planning, reviewed all site plans in Eastport, mo- many, many dozens of site plan reviews. He knew what he was doing. He approved the project. Now, you might say, well, why was the project approved if it exceeded thirty-two fifty? It was because the, he probably misinterpreted and misinterpreted the definition of floor area. And the architects at that time, and indeed up until this very day, until recently, have done things like calculated the void around a stairwell and excluded that from floor area. Or for the bigger houses that the staff has approved in Eastport, big houses that have elevators, they've excluded the volume of the elevator from floor area. So when you add those things back in, you've got some big houses in Eastport, right? So Mr. Hyman's house was built in a way or, and reviewed in a way that was conventional and regular at the time. Okay. And so the house, uh, as it turned out, when, uh, we measured it once I got here, exceeded thirty-two fifty. And when, when this was appealed to the Board of Appeals, I spoke honestly, yes, it was a, it was above thirty-two fifty. I thought the chain, that, the, the distance over thirty, thirty-two fifty was actually quite de minimis at the time. At, at the time, we thought it was about twenty-eight feet. And I thought perhaps Tom Smith at the time thought that's small. But the fact is, I don't think Tom ever actually measured the way the code required him to measure. He accepted the measurements and the methods of the architects, just like he had done for decades. He approved Mr. Hyman's house like he approved other houses. So we have a plan that was approved in twenty twenty-one. During the course of two years, following COVID, Mr. Hyman made many changes to that house. And the principal changes did not affect the footprint of the house or how tall the house was. They affected the, uh, the way the third floor attic space uh, was articulated, the, the steepness of the roof. He widened the roof uh, such that it sloped at a gradual slope, which increased the amount of square footage up on that third floor, that third floor attic. Okay? He made that space bigger. Uh, and he added balconies, uh, and perhaps made some other small inconsequential tweaks that I can't quite remember. But the principal change was he made the space upstairs a little bigger. But that got approved too. That was a revision. And there's been talk about multiple revisions. There's only one revision that was approved. There's only one revised plan and that was in twenty twenty-three. And that was approved by Tom Smith. And it was approved by our building plans reviewer, our construction plans reviewer. It was found to be in compliance with the code. It, it got approved and the permit was issued and Mr. Hyman got to work building that house. But when the neighbors saw the house being built, they saw the third, the floor, third floor going on and they thought that third floor seems larger than what we remember back in from twenty-one, twenty-one. And they were right because they never saw the twenty twenty-three plan because the staff never uploaded that plan to the public. So they were shocked to see that the rear of the house was bigger than, uh, what was proposed and, or that there could be balconies up on the, on the, on the, on the facades. Soon as I found out that the, 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 these revised plans, approved plans and permitted plans had not been made public, I said, make them public, upload them to our, our software. And during that time, we transitioned to new software from older software, this tracking software. So we uploaded and soon as it uploaded, the residents said, we want to appeal. And the Board of Appeals said, well, since they didn't have a chance to appeal before, we're, we're going to give them a chance to appeal now, even though the house is built, we're largely constructed. In fact, it was. That's why they were able to judge the differences. And, uh, so it went to the Board of Appeals. The Board of Appeals said, it looks like, they, they dismissed all the, the charges and the outlandish slander that was leveled against the department and the process. They said, basically, it looks like there was a, a mistake made in the measurements, that the definition essentially of floor area wasn't a, a, applied appropriately. And that's the beauty of the appeal process because it clears the house. For decades, the staff had been administering that particular provision incorrectly. So they sent it to, they remanded it to the director and, and that's why, you know, I tried to work with the Mr. Hyman and effectively try to say, can you eliminate square footage from this building? Can you cut out a big notch out of the house? Can you take the third floor off? Can you carve out the mudroom and, and the back? Can you make the back of the house shorter? And at each one of those interventions, uh, Mr. Hyman said, the impact of that is far more difficult to ma- to, the, on the, the structure than you can imagine. It's not as simple about erasing. Um, because when you change the roof line and move it in, the walls that support that roof uh, are going to be positioned in a different way. That means you need to have structure in the second floor to support that. And, and so each time it became quite a structural dilemma for Mr. Hyman, who's a contractor, carpenter, uh, and, and in his team, they, they couldn't absorb those, those costs presumably. I didn't, you didn't hear testimony about that necessarily tonight, but, but that's what we learned after months of, and many meetings and tours through the building. Okay. Well, one point I want to make, Steve, before I leave. The plan that was approved originally in twenty twenty-one is the same plan that you're looking at tonight, except for the change in that third floor roof and some of the balconies. The articulation of the building, the design of the front, all that went through the approval process, approved by Tom Smith, who has been with this department for years. So he ju- he applied the criteria. I think it would be acceptable for, for the planning commission to defer, to proffer Mr. Tom Smith's review in our department's previous, uh, review of all these criteria, if you wanted to, and just weigh in on the, on the fact that the building is, is bigger than thirty-two fifty. You don't have to set a precedent. This doesn't have to be how things happen in the future. You could just say, we've got a situ- this is a unique situation and let it stand.
Thank you. You just, you just absolutely answered my biggest concern, which is I don't want to set a precedent. I want to honor this very unique property and this very unique homeowner. I absolutely want to remove any cultural nonsense because it's not there. Mr. Snowden, I appreciate you being here, but it, you and I have had drinks and beers and here and there, but it's not there. We're just trying to do the right thing here. And I, I just learned so much more about the history of this particular property, but Tom Smith, for me, um, he's been the guiding light of how to do things. And I, I believe that your guidance here is the right one. I don't want to proffer a, a, a decision on this myself because I just don't feel like I have enough history. I don't feel like I have enough experience. I just don't. No way am I gonna make this particular decision in the, in the, in the face of all the different opinions that are out here. I, I, I believe what you just said, Chris, is probably the right thing. I mean, Tom, Tom had an opinion on this and it was already kind of decided. That's where, that's where I'm coming in. It's like, I just don't want to make these policy decisions that we make today onerous on things that have already been decided. But also I don't want to set precedent for things that were going to make things so much more challenging. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask my friend Alex again now after.
I would like to cut in, Steve. It's now quarter to eleven.
I know, but this is an important one. I don't want.
I'd like to leave the public hearing open. Uh, we will continue it. There have been a number of questions.
Real, real quick, Bob, can I just ask Chris a quick question?
Okay, you guys.
This is important. This is important.
Stop right after this. Chris, as it stands right now, is that what was approved in twenty twenty-three?
Yes, exactly.
Decide the whole third floor?
Exactly. Yeah, exactly. It's the plan that was approved and permitted by the building official.
I mean, I'm sorry, it was approved. I don't know what, I don't know, I don't know how we can go move the goalposts so much that we make it so difficult for this one particular applicant. I'm not saying that we should set precedent. I'm just saying that we have to live up to and own the things that we did. I, this is where I disagree with Alex. That's why I keep deferring.
We can't, we can't ask.
Wait, 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 wait. Public hearing is open.
Okay.
You guys are talking decision-making.
Okay. Yes, you're right. You're, you're right. You're right.
Back off. All right. Okay. Do I hear a motion that we should, uh, continue this until November the sixth?
Um, Quentin's had his hand up patiently. Let's, let's, before we go there, let's let him.
Sure. Thank you. I appreciate that. Um, yeah, I want to share my screen real quick. Um, so I've, let's see here. So I've, I've kept quiet really mostly because I, I'm, want to have an open mind and, and give people the chance to, to change my mind here, right? Um, everything I can see here, this was the approved plan. It was approved, right? Now, so someone says, okay, but is it compatible? Really comes down to the issue of compatibility, right? So this right here is uh, R two N C, right? The, um, this is the, the area that we're talking about. This is the square footage of residential structures. So I've, I've made it so that I'm only looking at residential structures within that area. It is compatible with the square foot. Now it's on the higher side, yes, but there are bigger ones. And so when you're looking at structures that are bigger and older, right? So when we're saying, okay, well, we really want to keep the integrity of the, the history of this place. You're looking at homes built in nineteen-ten, nineteen-fifty, nineteen-ninety-six, nineteen-thirty, that are that size. You're talking about something that we approved. I don't, I just don't see the argument for why we would ever switch and, and turn around and say anything other than go at it, have a great life, enjoy your family home. So that's where I am on this. That's all I'm going to say.
I would suggest, Mr. Cummings, that, uh, you supply a copy of that um, in some kind of form, that it can be made a part of the record. And, um, and while I'm talking record, uh, I'm going to include, uh, whatever the applicant provided that's not on the, um, the sheets that have already been provided. Um, I'm going to ask that all of the written comments be included in the record so that I don't forget. And the height, uh, table that Mr. Sullivan provided, I think that he showed us a table. If not, it's in his written comments, but let's make sure that that's part of the record as well. And, um, with that, would you like to continue or would you like to adjourn?
I think it's a good place to stop.
Okay. I was gonna say, let's keep, keep going. I don't care.
I mean, I'm ready to take a vote on this thing if, if anybody else is ready to take.
I've got, I've got nowhere to stop because I believe that we, I, I believe this is such an important issue because there's this yes, today and yesterday and today and tomorrow. And I think that we're at that inflection point. And I think Chris's job is like defined by what this, this decision is kind of important. It's not, it's not, it doesn't hold him to it. But, I mean, I know he has an opinion on it and I know we all have an opinion on it, but man, there's just, there's right and wrong here. Like, we already agreed to something.
Can I ask you a question? Quick, quick on, on process. Do we, is, is there anybody else that's going to testify or, or i- if, if, if we're done with people making pub- public testimony, I'm happy to.
Mr. Plin, we have about seven people that are still in the wing here today alone. And, and there's some other people I think that's reached, have reached out as well.
Okay. Well, I, I think it's, yes, I think that we've missed a lot of people from the community.
Okay.
Um, pro and con. Um, and I think that it, it would make some sense to sort of back off and like, let's, let's back off because we need to hear, we need, we really need to hear all sides and we've not been able to.
Mr. Waldman, do I have it correct that if we continue in November, it, it will be in person? And anyone who has not tested, uh, offered public comment this evening will have an opportunity to do so then?
Yes, and you'll have an opportunity to respond.
First, we would give them the first right of refusal. If they're in this meeting tonight, we should give them first right of public comment in the next meeting.
Who, 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 the applicant?
Whoever's, whoever has not had the opportunity tonight, if they're on the list, they should be the first ones to get the opportunity.
Oh, yeah. Oh, okay. I understand. Okay. There's seven people waiting in the wings. Yes. Okay, fine. All right. Mr. Fulton, clear?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Any other, now, are we prepared to, a motion to continue this, uh, leave the public hearing open and continue till November sixth? Do I hear that motion?
Some moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor of continuing until, till, uh, November sixth? Can I say aye? Aye, two, three, four, five. Okay, okay. Any opposed?
Well, I, I mean, I, I'll say this, I, I, I will be.
What's your vote?
I'm abstaining because I'm not, I cannot be here on the sixth. So you're gonna have to do without my sweet face.
That's terrible though. I, I, I like, is there any way?
That was part of my motivation to keep, keeping going because it personally, but fair enough. I'm just one person.
Well.
Anyway, so.
He's an important person to, to some of us.
I, so for what it's worth, I will prepare some written comments.
That sounds good.
For you to adjust and, and consider in my absence.
That sounds good. That sounds like a very appropriate means of, of providing your input.
Yep.
Sounds good. All right. Uh, there being nothing else, I believe, um, do I hear a motion to generally adjourn then?
Some moved.
Okay, second?
Second.
Second. All right. All in favor of? Second. All right, all in favor of adjourning at five minutes of eleven?
Aye.
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 Okay.